Harding.
Here.
Hug.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Don Rowe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may have a seat. My remarks today are directed more to those of us up front than to out in the chambers. As we meet today, I'd like for us all to acknowledge the responsibility we have to serve our neighbors in the city of Omaha with integrity and diligence. Our decisions each week shape the direction of Omaha's future, impacting the lives of every resident. I know that we all want to represent our districts and the people that live in our neighborhoods, but we also have a responsibility to the whole. We live in challenging times, but we also live in an exciting time, and we're experiencing an awesome sense of momentum in Omaha. We must remain steadfast in promoting public safety, economic prosperity, quality infrastructure, and affordable housing. Our decisions really do matter. We have a full agenda this afternoon. Let's remember the trust placed in us by the people of Omaha, and let's conduct ourselves with the honor and dignity they expect from us. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I'll encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least to vibrate.
Item six, the resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living in the R435 district located at 1606 North 60th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Joni Sturick. I'm the one who's asking for the special use permit. I'm going to claim ignorance, I'm not sure how this always works, but in City Planning, I did a little presentation, but reading through the notes, it looks like you guys kind of have the debrief on it. Do you have questions for me, or would you like for me to do a small presentation about it?
I think a short overview would be good. I think I may have some questions for you about the site and the operations.
Okay, absolutely. It is a house that I purchased in September of 2021. I own that, purchased it for my mother, so that way I could keep her in a home-like setting when we moved her out of our South Omaha two-story. Moved her very close to me, I live about five blocks away from this property. And basically, she lived there until she passed away in November of 2023. And I brought her there, she had frontal lobe dementia and needed a lot of care. And the community-type settings was not the right fit for her. I wanted something more intimate and home-based. So I brought in teams of great caregivers who helped me keep her at home until she passed. In her passing, I own this home, and I was trying to decide what to do with that. And I am also a seasoned real estate agent, and I have founded my own senior placement services company that helps seniors transition. And there is a very large need for seniors to find affordable senior housing. And a lot of times, people stay home too long by themselves because they cannot afford care. 24/7 care for one person in a home runs about $20,000 to $21,000 a month. And so I tried to bring about an idea that honors my mother's legacy to make senior housing more affordable in a home-like setting. Clearly, not everyone can buy homes for their parents. I was lucky that I was able to do that with her. But my goal is to have four seniors sharing that space with a onsite caregiver, not living onsite, but someone who's there 24/7, another team of caregivers to help with the activities of daily living. If additional services are needed from healthcare standpoints, that would be additional care that maybe they'd come in, like a nurse visit or hospice care, whatever would be needed to keep that resident safe. My understanding is that I could do this with three residents with zero oversight. I thought of doing that, but the longevity of this property really works best for four. Because of the cost of care, it would be great to have four people sharing that cost instead of three, thereby keeping it a little more affordable for people. We will just be doing daily living activities such as cooking, cleaning, laundry, bath aids, medication reminders only. But things that people need that they struggle with staying at home by themselves. And just as a way to keep seniors safe and engaged in an environment that feels like home, so.
Thank you.
That's why I did for the four for the special use permit.
As long as you're at the microphone there, I'll maybe just ask you a few questions about that operational plan. So this isn't my district, and I've been, I've seen the house, and I know where it is, and I've talked with neighbors also who I think we'll hear from here in a minute. So it's a four-person total you'll have onsite.
Correct.
And you'll have someone operating 24/7, or how would you describe staffing of the?
Well, I will be operating it 24/7, but I will have in-home caregivers who will work their shifts. Generally, it's an eight-to-10-hour shift, depending on what their availability is. But I will have a handful of people, similar to what I had with my mom, to help manage the care. I do also have a handful of companies that I personally vetted in my senior placement services that are really good with in-home caregiving. And they have a plethora of people that can be in queue to help make sure that there's no shifts that is left unattended.
And are you the primary contact person for any neighbors that might have concerns?
I am.
And have you shared your information with them, or will you?
I have.
I think that's very important in these situations, too.
I agree. I haven't had a call, but yes, I agree.
Good, I think that's important going forward. And by the way, I can empathize with the need you're trying to address, having gone through this myself recently.
Yes.
So I appreciate what you're trying to do for those that need assistance, particularly with dementia.
Thank you.
To the site in particular, so four residents, it does have a driveway and a two-car garage.
Correct.
So parking would be contained onsite for residents?
Well, the residents won't drive. They will be, even though it's a non-disabled special use permit, really, the project plan is that they will be disabled in regards to, they're going to have cognitive disabilities, to where generally they will not be driving, but they could have visitors or maybe an onsite caregiver who, you know, maybe needs to administer medications to them or things like that. So they themselves won't be driving or parking, but they may have visitors or a care team that will stop by.
Most likely accommodated in the driveway, but in an instance where maybe it isn't on a weekend or something, there is street parking on one side of 60th Street.
There is, but in all honesty, no one parks there. And no one parks there. I honestly would ask people not to park on the streets because of a speed bump that was put on there. I've been at that house many an hour, and the amount of people who miss that speed bump and go skating over it and crashing, you know, it's like nails on a chalkboard. You hear that throughout the day. So I would really strongly encourage people not to park on the street, but to say people cannot park on the street is a different story. I will have the caregiver who is on staff park in the garage, and then there will be adequate space for at least four other cars in the driveway.
Thank you. And the last question I have for you for now is, I know some neighbors have the concern, and I think we'll hear about it here in a minute, about the increasing number of group homes in the immediate neighborhood, whether it be disabled or non-disabled. And that is true, that's a concern, I understand. So I think in the planning board discussion, you've shown a willingness to have a condition on a special use permit that would tie the permit to you, the operator, not the house going forward. So if anytime in the future you decided not to continue or move the business somewhere else, someone who might want to do it at this site would have to come back and reapply. Is that a condition you're?
Yeah, and that was a condition, and we had that at the neighborhood meeting where that was brought about. And, you know, I agree to that, I will agree to that, but with a caveat to of an understanding that my primary concern is going to be for the seniors that are within that home. And if for some reason I did choose to sell that property, which is not on the forefront, but I understand things change, I would, my goal would be to not displace them because of a special use permit issue. So if they could be guided, you know, to go maybe back to three, where especially this permit is not required, I would really lean on City Planning to really help the transition work smoothly, so that way seniors are not negatively affected because of that. But if that is a condition of it, I will agree to that.
Okay, good, thank you. I do have that floor amendment today, so I wanted to make sure you knew that was something I may move today and that you were agreeable to it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions?
We'll come back if needed.
Thank you.
Any other proponents to number six?
My name is Becky Belastri. I have lived at 1617 North 60th Street for 28 years. I'm here as a neighbor, as a daughter of very aged parents. My dad lived to be 99, and my mom lived to be 93, and as a pastor of a congregation with many elderly members. I strongly support the proposed Owl House. As has already been mentioned, apparently some of my neighbors think that this will cause a tremendous amount of traffic on our street. My mother was in a nursing home, my father was in independent living, and how I wish they had had so many visitors that they had caused traffic problems, but that was not the case. By the time people are in their 80s, either many of their friends have died and/or they are no longer driving. I visit my homebound church members, and in more than 30 years of ministry, never have I interrupted a visit by a friend with one of those members. Sadly, too often, living in any kind of care facility is a lonely existence for older adults. I have also heard that my neighbors are concerned about parking on the street, which is allowed. A week ago, a pair were on my front porch asking me to sign a petition. The irony is that they frequently park their car on the street at the end of the driveway. As has already been noted, this house has a double driveway that will easily allow for four cars. I'm very jealous of it because it's flat. If there were any visitors or medical staff at the house, they would have plenty of room. In my opinion, parking on the street is not an issue. If it does become an issue, anyone can park on my driveway, which is two doors away. Would that my parents had had an option of living safely in a house rather than in separate facilities? What Joni Sturick is proposing offers companionship to older adults. To be able to easily play cards, or do puzzles, or chat with house companions substantially reduces the feeling of isolation and loneliness. The lives of the residents at the Owl House will be greatly enhanced. When the first residents move in, I will be at the door with a plate of cookies to welcome them to the neighborhood. I strongly encourage you to vote yes for this proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Debra, please.
My name is Deborah Smith, at 6007 Shubert Street, homeowner and living in the neighborhood for 24 years. I'm not exactly opposing it, but I have a petition to request that we, the neighbors of the property located at 1606 North 60th Street, are aware that there are two different types of special permits that can be issued for small group living. We understand them to be, one is assigned to the property and could be perpetual, stay with the structure. The second one, at your discretion, you can apply a special use permit to a specific applicant or the owner. In this event, the permit would become void upon change of ownership of the site and require a new application. And we respectfully request that the special use permit be issued to the specific applicant, Johnny Jack, who's the owner, rather than have it run with the land. The owner will still be able to provide the services she desires to the senior residents of this property as she had proposed. So in our public meeting, like Johnny made, acknowledged my words, we had discussed this, and at that time, ensuring with that, she indicated a willingness to accept this permit if this should be granted. So I have signatures of a number of residents within 300 feet on this paper that I will turn in, so that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Return here. Any other opponents that want to speak?
I think it's despairing that people who are elderly, disabled, handicapped anyway are not given?
I need your name and address first.
Roland Van Holman, 5612 North 107th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I've resided there since May 1989.
Thank you.
I'm a retired National Union organizer. I'm not a politician, I'm an activist, period. I'm tired of you guys thinking you can run us. You work for us, your job is to take care of us, okay? My streets have been total disrepair forever. You've sought this into the signal.
Number six, sir, number six?
Okay, number six. I lived in SID at one time, I was on the SID committee. Omaha took us in, and since we live in Omaha, wait a minute, no pavement my streets.
It's a special use permit on number six.
A permit is this, sir, when are you going to pave the streets in where I live? Why did you build a school across the street without? Yeah, I'm out of order, you know why? You guys are ashamed, and you're afraid to answer this particular straightforward question. You work for us, you're a public servant.
I'm going to ask you to cease your comments, please.
You're a public servant, you work for us. Read the Constitution, United States of America, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any opponents to number six?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm not opposed to the general concept of this, but I oppose to it because I want to keep this type of arrangement out of my neighborhood. I'm at 50th and Lafayette, in a little ways west of 50th. And there's been some multifamily-type things sold populated by a real estate agency in our neighborhood now, starting to drive us out. There's creating students. But this appears to be your density program. And, you know, I think it's time for citizens to say, wait a minute, we want to live in our neighborhood, and we don't want to pay taxes for group living. We're not necessarily mean people, but we want to maintain the character of our neighborhoods. So find another way to help these people. You've got enough taxes, you're building all these places up north and stuff that we're going to hear about later today. Use some of those facilities, and use some of the property we've got around here that's already paid for, like all that property by the Center Shopping Center out there that's bought and paid for by the county or whatever. But it's sitting unused because the city and county want to use people's property now for density. Leavenworth Street was on the news this afternoon for another high-rise apartment building, which, by the way, happens to be probably some real estate company that calls himself a developer. And it wouldn't get built without this type of arrangement or tax increment financing, which actually hurts the people that live in those neighborhoods. But you won't admit that.
Thank you.
It needs to be discussed more thoroughly, please.
Thank you. Any other opponents today to number six? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmembers, I don't see any further lights, so I'll just indicate my opinion about this as I was engaging the applicant and my intention to offer a floor amendment that I think has been distributed and shared with the city clerk with the assurances provided by the applicant in terms of her operations and her being available to neighbors and providing what I think is a valuable service in our city, combined with the agreement to have the special use permit only apply to her as the owner rather than the property itself, I would be supportive of this with that special permit floor amendment to that issue. So if a council member is willing to propose that, I would second it, and I think we can move forward. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'll move your floor amendment.
There's a motion, a second to floor amendment. This would be adding the permit to the property owner, not the land. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yeah.
Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Second.
Has amended.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you for your testimony.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for the Palazzo located at 5110 North 132nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. I think we have the applicant by Zoom. Is the applicant here? Come on down, even better.
I don't do too good on Zoom. Never did. Excuse me, my name is Terry Bullen Purdy. I'm the president of the American Italian Heritage Society, and we've been in existence for 43 years. We've originally had our building on, we bought the old Saint Witslaus Church on 14th and Pine, and in 2014, we built our building called The Plots on 5110 North 132nd Street. And we've had a group of people that had, and we've had a liquor license there before when we first started in 2016. And then we had a group called the Omaha Event Center who was doing rentals for us, and then they eventually got the liquor licenses. They sold most of the bar business at any of the rentals, and they have since vacated our premises, and we are applying for this liquor license today.
Great, thanks, Terry. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
I don't think so. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the Italian Heritage Society liquor license, right, Donnie?
Yes, sir, Mr. Fredson, how are you this afternoon, councilman? Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, and I have this opportunity to thank the Italian Family Association, Mr. Catania, and Mr. Mancuso at the Civic Auditorium, who spent lots of summers with me and got me into the Nebraska Royal Navy.
Any other proponents on number seven? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Ms. Melton.
Thanks, yeah, well, I'm going to move to approve, but I just want to say because we've got to have the Italian wine and the Italian beer there for Italian Fest every year.
It'll be a Labor Day weekend.
I appreciate doing that, and I think this year we're definitely going to get Councilman Bagley to play bocce ball at the Labor Day. He was supposed to do that, backed out last year, so, well, I thought I'd take this opportunity to challenge Councilman Bagley to that for this upcoming year.
Yes, absolutely.
You want to second my motion?
I will second it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks. There's a motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class C and LK liquor licenses for B5 Brewing Company located at 6115 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Aaron Bush, 6115 Maple Street, B5 Brewing, and my wife Kate. I guess this is all new to us, so we can make beer and we can serve it, we just got to figure out how to get it legal.
That's always preferred, yes.
Right, so, quick background with me is when the brewery, we purchased the brewery in December, an existing brewery called Infusion Brewing Company, which was open in 2013. I was the original brewer there for five years, and then left and worked in a different facility still in the beer business. And the owner, Bill, called me and said, well, I want to retire, do you want to buy the brewery? And so I asked my wife, of course, and she said yes. So that was the second best yes that I ever got from her. So we've been working diligently the last six months or so, kind of changing and giving a facelift to the building, the inside of the building, and want to put new beers on tap. So we like to present that to the public like we did 11 years ago and do it in our name and not someone else's name.
Excellent, well, it sounds like you know what you're doing, and you're a good team.
I've got a great team, absolutely, yeah.
I've had some people ask me, what will the new name be?
So B5 Brewing Company, so my last name is Bush, our last name is Bush. B-U-S-H, George, not Anheuser. So we couldn't put Bush in the name, we don't need those reparations coming from across the sea. So we made B5. So it's my wife, myself, and my three kids who are 100% involved. So we thought B5 was fitting.
That's great.
Yes.
Will you also serve food?
No, we're working on that, though.
All right.
That's a work in progress, yeah, we're bleeding a little money now, let's get some money coming in, then we'll, my daughter Julia, she wants to be the chef, so we're going to do a little caveat somewhere in the brew house in the next 12 to 16 months, 18 months, and get a little small kitchen in there, and then probably come back before you again and make sure that's approved.
Great.
Yes.
And then if approved today, when would you open up?
Well, we have a temporary operating permit now because of infusion, but, you know, if we get approved, however long that process is, we're using the temporary now to open on Friday. Benson First Fridays, actually.
Yeah, good idea.
April 5, yes.
All right, great.
That's the plan.
And are you involved with the Business Improvement District or the Creative District and everything else in Benson yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, we want to be very, very community-focused.
We were fortunate enough to live in the Benson area for 20 years, down the street on 63rd and the post office, so we're very familiar with the area. Still love the area.
Two of our kids live there, they're at 61st and Evans.
Great. We're glad to have you, we look forward to it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right.
Very much.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Hope to see you out there.
Item nine, to consider a Class C liquor license for Bruci located at 721 North 132nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Maureen Malidi, and my husband Lawrence, 7422 North 118th Circle. We don't have a lot of experience in the restaurant business, but we have, we're learning it, and we can't make any beer or do anything like that, but we do have a wonderful chef, and we're very excited to take over Bruci from the previous owner who wanted to retire, and.
Yeah, it's an investment for us. Our niece, Jennifer Coco, is the chef, she ran J. Coco for years, and so we purchase this primarily to give Jennifer a place to practice from. So, yeah, that's it. Day to day, we're not going to run too much, we'll be there, especially.
I will be a lot.
Rainey will be, but she'll run it, Jennifer will run it.
She's very good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you, I want to thank you for investing and taking over Bruci. I was a little afraid when I heard about the retirement that we were going to lose Bruci.
We heard a lot of that.
And there's a lot of people that felt that way. I can tell you, I'm a frequent flyer there, you're walking distance from my house.
That's great.
So we absolutely love the restaurant, I look forward to, I look forward to, well, the new chef who I've had before, but I think.
Two great chefs.
She is, they're fabulous, so I look forward to it, and I thank you for making that investment and keeping Bruci open, so with that, I'll move to approve it.
Thank you for the encouragement.
Thank you.
There's a motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Item 10, to consider a Class C liquor license for Izzy's Pizza located at 522 and a half, South 24th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Brett Geiger, owner, operator of Izzy's Pizza, and my wife Cherish Geiger. This is our first time in any. This is our first time in anything like this, but we've been running a pretty successful food truck for the past five years. Have gained quite a bit of popularity in town, a lot of recent publicity and stuff like that, and have been encouraged to open up our own little pizza shop. So got a nice little small affordable space and a back patio and a few tables inside. Looking to do mostly a takeout operation, maybe a little delivery. There's like six tables that would fit in the back with a gated patio and like three tables indoors. Otherwise, there's a lot of apartments and everything going up in the general area directly across the street from us and everything, and we feel like food and takeout, beer and wine would be a great addition to the residents there. So we're applying for our liquor license for that today.
Great. And your and your address, too?
The business address?
Your personal address.
One two five one two Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one four four.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Geiger, good afternoon to you guys. Thanks for being here today. What are your hours going to be, Brett, when you start?
We were looking at Wednesday through Saturday from eleven A M. to eight P M. We may extend Friday and Saturday until maybe ten, but nothing too late, really.
Okay, and you said you had your food truck. Was that for five years? You and I had a nice chat this morning.
Yes, yes. We actually, we started it in Las Vegas in two thousand and nineteen. And then my wife grew up in town, and we have a daughter, and we just wanted to get her back to a better school district, family, just a better environment for family. So we came here in two thousand and twenty-two. So we've been here with the food truck since then.
We're glad you're here and welcome to downtown Midtown Omaha.
Thank you.
So when I, when we have counsel, I like to go to lunch with some of my colleagues. You're not open Tuesdays, but that's all right. I'll catch you on the dates you're open. If I come up there for lunch on those dates, what can you get? Like a slice of pizza or a whole pizza or a salad, or what's your menu look like?
So we're still looking at doing slices just quality-wise properly, but it would be whole pizzas. We're going to have two different styles of pizza. We'll also have salads. We might do like subs or sandwiches. And then we're also working on maybe chicken wings as well. And then we'll have regular like Coke products.
You said chicken wings, right?
There you go. There you go. And they're going to be good, too.
Well, I'm wishing the best of luck, and thanks again for your investment and welcome to Omaha, and I'll be really glad to get up there and and check you out. And I know with the garage lofts and the flats and other new apartments down there, it's really taken off. So this is just a great addition, and I'm really glad to make a motion to support this, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Awesome. Can't wait to feed you.
Thank you.
I'll second. No further lights. There's a roll, a roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Roe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Item eleven to consider a Class I liquor license for Panda House Chinese Restaurant located at one four four five nine West Center Road.
Public hearing and vote on number eleven is today. We have the proponent by Zoom, Lilin Liu. I'll get you off mute here in a minute. All right, try that.
Hi. Hi, this is Lilin Liu, and my business location is one four four five nine West Center Road, Omaha, Nebraska. My business is Panda House Chinese Restaurant. I'm here for renewal of liquor license.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today?
No.
Seeing none, are there any any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Roe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item twelve to consider a Class D liquor license for Tipsy Fox located at five zero one four Grover Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twelve is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton, twenty-eight oh four South Eighty-seventh Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, Tipsy Fox LLC. This will be a purchase from a current liquor store, and the new ownership group is merely going to take over the license or would like to take, be approved to take over the license. They have a temporary operating permit until May twenty-ninth. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion is second to approve. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Roe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item thirteen to consider a Class D liquor license for Speedy Mart, two eight seven one, located at two eight one zero south one hundred and eighth street.
Public hearing and vote on number thirteen is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, David Houghton, twenty-eight four South Eighty-seventh Ave. This is on behalf of the applicant, Western Oil Two LLC, which will be doing business at Speedy Mart, twenty-eight seventy-one. This is also a current C store and gas station. The new ownership group would like to be awarded a new or be permitted to with a Class D liquor license. Speedy Mart is, or Western Oil Two has, I think, over forty operating permits in the state of Nebraska, all in all in good standing at this point. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, council of Omaha, Nebraska, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I was hoping to ask, well, welcome back, Ms. Johnson. I missed you the last few times. I wanted to say that as well. But I wanted to tell Ben Gray, this General Assembly of Ohio do not run its city of Omaha. In the meantime, sir, is it time to open up a debate since all this liquor is coming through for medical marijuana, sir?
That's not the topic today. Any other opponents to number thirteen? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Roe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items fourteen through eighteen were held on March nineteenth. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, this question is for Public Works. Has this vacation been discussed in Public Works Committee?
That I don't recall. Bob Stube, Public Works.
Thank you. And so we no longer can expect to have vacations discussed in the vacation committee?
Yeah, I believe from the standpoint, if if there were essentially damages committee, which is separate than the Public Works Committee.
So while this is being stated as a vacation, there's no damages, so therefore we would not consider that the way we would do in terms of meeting in a committee meeting to discuss this?
Yeah, that, again, that's a separate committee. Damages Committee is separate than the Public Works Committee.
Okay, and so who's responsible for damages?
Typically, that flows through the council staff with Public Works assistants. And I believe in this particular case, most likely because majority of the property owned by Creighton University, there were no damages identified.
Thank you. So we have no damages for this vacation?
There are no damages for this particular vacation to abutting property owners because, again, a majority of the property is owned by Creighton University at butts this particular street.
And what about business owners?
To the best of my knowledge, there are no business owners that are butting Burt Street.
The reason why I'm asking is because a few weeks back, we had a item on the agenda that spoke to reducing the speed limit for purposes of the traffic that was going in and out around Creighton University. I had a constituent reach out to me with the question why there was no public engagement, why there was no acknowledgement to the business owners regarding this reduction. So my question now is, has there been any touch points to business owners nearby regarding this movement?
Again, in this particular case, that this would have come in front of the planning board, and to the best of my knowledge, there were no individuals that spoke in opposition to this. This came in front of city council previously with a public hearing. There were no individuals that spoke in opposition to this. So essentially, this is a vote today only to vacate.
Understanding all of that, again, as I would have the responsibility to answer the question that was put before me by a business owner who resides in my district. The question was, have we reached out to those business owners regarding this movement in terms of a change? It's a a change that will impact their business, their environment, and that's why they're asking the question. And I'm asking the question as a representative for that district.
To the best of my knowledge, nobody has reached out to Public Works with regard to speeding in the area.
And in turn, Public Works did not reach out to the business owners.
We have no idea who the business owner is that you're referencing.
Okay, so I'm going to take that as a no, and so I'll be more than happy to share that with my business owner that no reach or no point of contact was given. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I guess I'm a little confused because I know there was outreach to businesses. I attended a public hearing that I think Councilmember Johnson helped organize with Father Hendrickson at Creighton that was attended by businesses in the area, all revolving around the issue of the vacation of Burt Street. So I guess I was a little confused by that line of questioning.
I'd be happy to answer your question regarding line of questioning since I did host that meeting. Again, my constituent reached out to me to ask the question, had anyone in the city of Omaha reached out to any of the business owners to to engage them in what was going out? Yes, as the city council person for that district, yes, I did hold a meeting. I, too, do not have an up-to-date list of all the business owners that would be impacted by this. So I hope that answered your question regarding your confusion, Mr. Harding.
There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
There's the approval.
Second. There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Roe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items nineteen through seventy-two are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, just so council members know, we do have the applicant for items nineteen and twenty by Zoom if needed. The floor is open.
I would like to address items forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty-eight. Do I do that at one time or each one is to come up?
Say those numbers again.
Forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty-eight.
Okay. And is it a similar observation you're having on them?
I am an opponent, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Go for it. Cheryl Weston, one eight two two Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one zero. I'm here as an opponent on the items forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine. Although they'll probably be approved, but I think it should be going on the record and questioned as these items are regarding the remediation program that is on forty-seven is going to be paid two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars to Malin Enterprise Omaha for lead remediation. Forty-eight is two hundred and four thousand dollars, four hundred and forty thousand. And then forty-nine is three hundred and six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. My problem that I have with this is this particular company, when you look on their website or if you do Google and research, these companies, that company, Malin Enterprise, is an industrial cleaning technology, major company that. But they don't show any projects underneath lead remediation. And to do lead remediation is totally different. I understand this morning in pre-conference, our planning representative spoke and said that they had been through the process. This company was pre-qualified in the latter part of two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to see, because there was not attached, and I think you should want to know, if they were pre-qualified, isn't it part of planning department to make sure that they would have experience in something like lead remediation? If you look at some of the attachments as far as showing the bid for these, the other companies all are well-known lead remediators for the Omaha Superfund site, such as E R, which has done previous for Omaha City Planning, M G, M was the other one, and Shaker Enterprise. All of those are truly experienced. There's a question where how did this company get on the list to become pre-qualified and they show no pre-experience in doing lead remediation? So and it's a different type. I've been involved in it when it originated back in two thousand or so with the Superfund site. And you do have to have a company who is qualified and experienced in removing the lead from the soil. So I think this is questionable. And before you approve it, I think you would want to know for our citizens here in Omaha, as taxpayers, as the EPA is a citizen, it's government. I believe Steve is here, who is involved with this. I think those questions should be, are valid concerns and should be before you approve this much money in this. That is my reason for objecting is the pre-qualifications. The R F P went out, and it was only two companies that had been pre-qualified. You can, it's not an open R F P. I don't know what else I can say about that, pretty much. So wait and then come back on fifty-eight or?
You can address fifty-eight now if you want.
Okay. Fifty-eight, item fifty-eight. Does this work? Okay.
Push it up, push it up all the way.
All these times, one of these times, I'm going to come up here and I'm going to get this right, right off the bat, no hesitation. Okay, I have a problem with this fifty-eight and concerns that I hope will be addressed on this item, which is a contract for the city of Omaha and the housing authority of the city of Omaha in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for transitional programs for homeless persons and programs for persons with disability for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I know all of you or most of you, can imagine not any of you, have heard all of the problems and things that are going on with O H A at this time because emails have been sent to you. Why are we going to continue with what Omaha Housing Assistance is doing? It says here that, you know, it's going to be Omaha Housing Authority is going to help thirty thirty individuals. And basically, when you look at all of the material that was put on there, which was two hundred and forty-two pages, tenants are really, all we're doing is subsidizing the Omaha Housing Authority voucher program for thirty. the Omaha Housing Authority voucher program for thirty people, which they are behind on for a two-year period. There's a waiting list for two years that this is. And now we, the City of Omaha, which means we, the people of Omaha, that you are representing, are going to foot this bill for three hundred thousand dollars. I realize that it may be grant money from somewhere or along those lines. The point is Omaha Housing Authority isn't doing a very good job right now of all the towers and the rental properties that they have for people in Omaha. People are living in substance, inhuman. I mean, we are taking better care of our pets, our animals, and so forth than some of these people are being in the circumstances that they're living. It's not even habitant that for some people to be able to live in these things, and now you're going to authorize another three hundred thousand dollars to them, to take them out of the hole to make sure that they can get their Section Eight program going. It's going to pay for all of that? I, I think it's wrong. So it needs to be with all of the housing organizations here in Omaha, surely we could have found someone else to help to make this possible for thirty low-income houses, housing. When you look at the breakdown, as I said, there's two hundred and forty-two pages online, and you see that this rental assistance program is going to be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars payments to that and then a delivery cost of thirty thousand. Aren't you going to ask some questions? You've heard all the problems, you've seen all the news media. Omaha Housing Authority needs to get their own house in shape before we give them any more money to operate their Section Eight program. I'd also talked about there in, on GA, where we're supposed to be providing economic opportunities. There's going to be no opportunities provided here. If they're not doing it now, what's going to make this be, they're going to do it? Again, we need to look at this. You are elected officials, we're putting this onto you to represent us. And this is not, until they can get theirself together, why should you, why should we, Omaha citizens, be footing this and making it possible for them to continue in the manner in which they are providing housing to individuals? The other part of this I wanted you to look at.
Maybe summarize pretty soon here, Cheryl, okay?
Okay. There it is. Is... This is their affirmative community center list, contact list, that is in their packaging. And it's stating there that if you look at that list, where are the urban media, social contacts and organizations? Here we go again, North Omaha, South Omaha, low-income, they're, all of these different social media, they're not on this list to be contacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on items nineteen through seventy-two?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Joni Poor, CEO, Omaha Housing Authority, eighteen twenty-three Harney Street, here to speak on item number fifty-eight. I also have with me Felicia Smith, our Director of our HCV and voucher program. Just wanted to clarify a number of things as Ms. Weston's facts were in fact not facts as our program, this program does not support our Section Eight program. It's a separate voucher program we've operated in partnership with the City of Omaha for well over twenty years. I looked at my most recent report for the month ending February, we had thirty households of thirty residing in those units that are allocated and those vouchers and those dollars supporting those households. I've spoke at length with a number of you regarding the recent media that is portraying our housing as substandard, which first of all is not related, anything related to voucher programs, but also is inaccurate and is misleading. Certainly, there are issues and concerns that we can always improve upon, but saying that the housing is substandard or unlivable is not accurate. So did just want to come up and clarify some of that information that was provided that was not accurate to you. I've had individual conversations with a number of you, appreciated that, had the chance to walk some of you through our properties, and you've seen yourselves what the condition is, and then also just to answer any questions about this. Again, I've got Fee here, who directs the program, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll see if there are any, any other testifiers on nineteen through seventy-two.
Hi, good afternoon, Kathy Bosman, Omaha Fire Chief, fifteen sixteen Jackson. I'm here as a proponent for items sixty-nine and seventy and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson requested foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And fifty-eight and sixty, they're really concerning to me because when I met with the Blair County Commissioner over in Blair, and Mayor Fahy annexed that land, I didn't ask for the land for him and Mayor Fahy to annex for his purpose. I asked for the land as I met with the Blair County Commissioner for a senior citizen to go back to farming. So I wanted to mention that.
This is not about annexation.
Oh, no, no, the land here, that's okay, thank you.
All right. Any other testifiers on these items?
Hello, Mike Elgerson, Executive Director of the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, here as a proponent for item number forty-five and available for any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Louise Hemanis, twenty-seven oh nine, do we have you? I want to be a proponent for fifty-eight. For three hundred thousand for the City of Omaha Housing Authority. I've been listening to comments, I want to agree with comments about monitoring the use of funds for Housing Authority. I think there's waste in the department or in the division, and it's not necessarily evident. I've seen waste with construction, moving earth, creating housing. How are we using funds to make sure that the Housing Authority has the units needed? And I've always assumed that they are capable, but I've seen some of the construction, and I think there's waste going on. I don't know administratively if waste is happening, but I know that like maintenance and more of practical things are, are being wasted, or at least that you can do better job. And if you reduce waste, then there's more money to go to the actual services that the Housing Authority is supposed to provide. I, I'll talk more about it throughout the year, but I think I, I saw some waste going on with construction. Thank you.
Okay. Other testifiers on these items?
Hi, I'm Mike Sean Law, Douglas County GIS Administrator, here to answer any questions about item forty-five, proponent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Looks like we have one more.
Good afternoon, I'm Paul Fileman, three seventeen Clear Creek Drive, Uten, Nebraska. And I came to take a neutral position on item number fifty-eight regarding the Housing Authority. And I wanted to use just a couple minutes to talk a little bit about.
Probably don't take neutral, it can be a proponent or a opponent.
Okay, we'll go with a opponent then.
Okay.
I'd learned about conditions, some concerns about conditions at the Underwood Tower a month or two ago, and so I, doing community advocacy, I'm a retired mental health therapist. I, I talked to Joni Poor, we never met, but I called her and talked to her and said I was concerned about things that were being reported, and I just wanted to hold a vigil over there. I've been there about three or four weeks and got a big sign that says, OHA, please support healthy, safe housing. And I've got Joni's contact information on there because she gave me that. Strange thing happened while I was there. For four weeks, I've had people talk to me about their lives, where they live, what goes well, what's not going well. And clearly, in, in my discussions, what's, what's come to light is the number of people living in these housing units, a lot of them have serious mental illness, elderly, disabled, and they're basically just moved into a unit. And it's not necessarily OHA's job to provide support to them. I did casework and mental health work for twenty-five years. A lot of these folks would be, would have been on my caseload, and I would have been doing advocacy and supporting them and making sure that their needs were being met and their conditions of their living. But I've seen videotapes that were done on the inspections by the city and the Health Department. And the conditions in some of those apartments were just deplorable. For starters, every one of them had the oven on. The doors were open and the oven coil was running in November because there was heat problems. But I think that if you have more engagement from the community, and that's kind of what I wanted to propose today, I've talked to Preston Love a little bit about maybe meeting with Ms. Poor and talking about how the community and OHA can work together to provide more oversight and collaboration and inspection and support of residents to identify infrastructure issues, you know, infestation issues and mental health issues. There, you've got cluttering on one hand, then you've got bug infestations. If you try to get services, when I got there, people, one guy told me, first guy I met over there said he couldn't go to the dentist. I said, well, why not? He goes, well, Moby won't come anymore. And that was not uncommon, where organizations weren't coming anymore because of the bedbug infestation. So it, it's a really extensive issue of infrastructure problems and people's needs who are not being identified and supported. There's people that do get support, services coming in there, but I think the ones that have the worst problems, nobody goes in there because the conditions are so bad. I mean, there's, I, there's horror stories that some of the residents tell me about a guy that sleeps in the hallway, that screams. There's some serious mental illness things going on. I think if we can work together, we could, you know, bring resources and support to everybody in, in the OHA towers. And that's kind of why I came today was to see if I could propose that idea. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Other testifiers on nineteen through seventy-two?
Larry Stewart, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Seems from what we're hearing today that the, the price of all these programs are starting to slap us in the face.
So which item are you speaking of?
Omaha Housing Authority, for example.
Are you speaking of fifty-eight?
All right, fifty-four through sixty and fifty-eight.
As an opponent?
Yeah, I'm opposed to all of them. Mainly because at some point in time, you've got to stop giving money away. Grants, whether whoever the grant money is from runs out at some point in time, and then somebody has to pick up from there. So who would that be other than taxpayers? And maybe the grant funds come from taxpayers anyway, or sales taxpayers, bus riders, whatever. Even the Housing Authority have problems. I can remember when hell was raised about the K Apartments and city, everybody in the city was out there to go after Mr. K because he had rundown apartments. Why not with the City of Omaha Housing Authority units? We haven't heard anything about that, have we? I drive past one just about every day. Mr. Feldman is there just about every day trying to bring attention to it. Some ladies here bringing attention to it. But as I try to go through these agendas on all of these items, it's really hard to understand the legal language, but adding up the dollars is, oh my God, what's going to happen when those grants go away? What's going to happen when somebody has to cough up the money to redo, maybe tear down and get tax increment financing for Omaha Housing Authority building? But you don't admit that it costs taxpayers somewhere along the line, no matter how you do it. So you maybe bite the bullet, start saying no to some programs and deciding which ones you're going to take money away from. Because you're driving people out of Omaha because of taxes and things. And there's not enough facilities for people that need the help. Excuse me. I'm not opposed to helping people, but you can't just continually bring people in here to pass out taxpayers' money to do it. You need to talk about it openly, two-way with the citizens, instead of continually having subcommittee meetings during the day when people work and they can't attend it. The local newspapers do not report on this stuff. We used to get reports on this stuff, but we don't anymore. And I think I know the reason. He'll probably shut me up for this, but I think we have a real problem with cultural Marxism in this country.
That is off topic, yes.
Okay? And you're not representing the people that own you, you don't own us, you work for us, you're supposed to speak for we, the people, everybody, not certain groups.
All right, thanks, Larry. Public hearings are closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, during our pre-council meeting, the items on this consent agenda, I have several questions. So I would ask that we understand that I will be going through a list of questions for a different agenda items. When I'm finished, I will let you know that I'm finished by saying I'm finished. Item number twenty-six is where I'd like to start. And as, again, in doing our pre-council, we had Public Works. I asked the, I would like to ask some questions. I think it was Jim, you were in pre-council. Yes, if you could come up front to answer the question regarding this software, because you indicated that DLT, DLT Solutions could not attend.
I think we have a designated here.
Okay.
Hello, Krista Wassner, Design Engineer for Public Works. I've been designated to answer that question for you. DLT is our software vendor for AutoCAD. AutoCAD is a software program that our engineers use to create and review plans for all the projects that we work on. Did you, did you have another question?
Yes. Thank you for answering that, because that's what I was looking for in, in doing our pre-council. So I understand that this software, this CAD, would be something that you would use to help administer your work. How is that a benefit, though? I mean, it's a huge amount of money, thirty-six thousand. So I'd like for audience and other individuals in Omaha, our citizens, to understand the benefits of this purchase.
Yes, so it is a software program that we use to be able to create and review all of our project plans. AutoCAD is an industry standard. It is the city's chosen standard for drafting software. Drafting, as in to computer-aided drafting, we actually draw out alignments and profiles with the software and create the plans. So it, like I said, it's an industry standard. Without it, we cannot design our projects. So the big benefit to the cities of Omaha is so that we can actually design our capital projects.
Thank you. All right, moving on to question number, or agenda number thirty-nine, where we have the Jacobs Engineering Group, that we have a value to have a on-call service. I'd like for someone to explain why this is needed, what are the benefits for that? Please.
Austin Rouser, Public Works Department. This is a result of several agreements that have been made with primarily fiber optic companies that are installing utilities in the public right-of-way. As you know, those companies, they tend to need a lot of oversight. We've, we've had a lot of citizen complaints about the way that those companies operate. We've had a lot of citizen complaints about the way that those companies operate. So having, just having the staff to be able to oversee them, Public Works doesn't have that staff internally. So we've made agreements with some of those companies for them to fund us to have consultants to come out and help supplement our staff to go out in the field and observe that. So that's the value that this provides.
So if we were to have constituents, I received a phone call from constituents regarding the movement of fiber optics. How would I field those questions to these entities such as, in this case, CNC Surveying LLC? Go ahead.
You could contact the Public Works Department. We can look into any specific questions, any specific issues. I will say that CNC surveying is a separate issue. That is for a city project, that's for our traffic signal infrastructure.
While it may be easy for you to route me to the Public Works Department for a question that a citizen might have, most of the time, citizens are looking for a turnaround service in fewer than 24, 48 hours. It would be a lot more beneficial for me if you could provide me with information regarding when these services are going to be in the area in which I probably will receive calls so that I can directly speak with these individuals to answer those questions. I'm afraid that contacting the Public Works Department will cause me to be delayed in getting an answer.
So these are actually embedded staff. So while they work for outside companies, we consider them embedded employees. They report to a supervisor within Public Works Department. I will say that Public Works is a first responder organization. We operate 24/7. So we have call centers that are open all the time, any hour of the day, any day of the week, we can be contacted with issues that arise.
And your turnaround time is?
It would depend on the issue.
Right, so we're back to me being able to answer?
So specifically, our turnaround time for what issue?
If I receive a phone call asking for questions on the services that are being done in the area from a constituent, it could be a number of things. You just pointed out that that was the need for these experts to be in a supportive role to facilitate or help the Public Works Department because of the questions that were coming from citizens within the community. So if those questions come, they could come to me. And I'm asking, how could I filter those questions to these individuals that we are paying additional money because you said the need was there?
Okay, so again, it would be issue-dependent. So I'll just go ahead and speculate on some issues that we would deal with with fiber optic installers. One is, there's the issue of, a lot of property owners don't realize that there's public property that's right-of-way adjacent to their home. So they may say, you know, this fiber optic company is installing on my property. And it's not actually their property, it's within the right-of-way, they're permitted to do so. That's a question we can turn around a quick answer to same day. Sometimes the issue might be, let's say it's erosion where the company didn't, they failed to reestablish grass growing in an area where they may have excavated. That's an issue where, you know, if we get that complaint, you know, we can investigate it, within a few days, we can have them go out and reseed it. Obviously, grass takes time to grow, so just depending on the issue, it could take, it could be an immediate response, it could be a few days.
Thank you. Let's see here, so that same, the same answers would be for number 42, so I don't need to repeat that, but thank you. Item number 44, we talked about that in pre-council as well. If someone could explain the nuances regarding what's going on here in this resolution?
I believe Mr. Endenbosch handled that this morning. Mr. Kuz, are you able to repeat what his answer was on this one?
Mackozi Law Department, this was item number 46.
44.
44. This is a subdivision agreement between the City of Omaha, Antler Review Phase One Business Association, and Monica Dempsey. It's a subdivision agreement involving some property. And Monica Dempsey is an individual who is part of that subdivision agreement, along with the Antler Review Phase One Business Association.
And if you can expand upon that, as Bernard had indicated during the pre-council, the use of maintenance of drainage, et cetera. Mr. Kuzi?
Mackozi Law Department, I believe that was Mr. England from the Planning Department, who opined on that, but I believe that there were statements regarding what you just said, yes.
Okay, so planning, if you could expand on that, please.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, can you repeat your question?
During our pre-council today, this question was asked, number 44. And Eric England mentioned that there was something worth mentioning here regarding the use of maintenance of drainage?
Well, I haven't talked to Eric since pre-council, so I'm not quite sure what he responded to maybe one of the questions you had. But this is a simple subdivision agreement that is required for most subdivisions when public improvements or maintenance of outlots are required as part of that subdivision.
Okay. And this is something that Mr. England said during the pre-council meeting regarding maintenance, so you wouldn't have had to speak to him afterwards. It was something that was discussed during our pre-council.
I believe he did answer the question. Is there another question for him?
I don't believe he answered the question.
Well, again, I'm not going to speak for Eric, but what I can tell you is that this is a simple subdivision agreement that's required as part of the planning process for this piece of land. And it describes and requires how some public improvements will be installed as part of this subdivision and for the maintenance of the outlet.
Thank you. Item number 45, we do have someone here from Metro Area Planning Agency. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike Elgerson, Executive Director, Metro Area Planning Agency.
Thank you. I'm a little bit, first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming and taking time out of your schedule to talk about this. One of the things that is happening all over Omaha and all over the world, we have individuals that are needing to receive additional information. I'm afraid that we have gotten into this situation where we are sometimes using or leveraging nonprofit agency as stakeholders to engage the public. And many times, those nonprofit organizations are not filtering that information down to grassroots neighborhood level. So I would like for you at this time to explain to the public what you're doing here.
Sure, so the...
Brief summary is fine.
Yeah, so the Nyrock Aerial Photography Project is the Nebraska-Iowa Regional Orthophotography Consortium. Orthophotography means basically top-down photo. So it's collected via aircraft that are mobilized to this region, and it collects multi-county aerial photography. And so this is a joint purchasing activity that MAP has administered for the better part of two decades now at this point. And we do that cooperative purchasing to more or less provide a continuity between the imagery that's collected between neighboring counties, but also provide the administrative burden, or relieving that administrative burden from our county members. City of Omaha is slightly unique, being the large size of the jurisdiction within Douglas County, that the aerial photography collected for Douglas County, there is this cost-sharing arrangement between the City of Omaha and Douglas County on this. And that's what you see before you here today. Exhibit one has a good summary, I believe, of some of the deliverables and the cost-sharing, which is also bought down by some of our regional partners, MUD, OPPD, and the Omaha Airport Authority for Douglas County as well. So it's a good way of providing a meaningful service to the public. Aerial photography is used by many of the departments represented here today, Public Works and Planning, and the Assessor's Office is part of their daily usage. Mike Shonlaw, GIS Coordinator here. For Douglas County, I'd be able to speak to more of those specific applications if you're interested in that.
Thank you. And you were going to say a few words?
Yeah, Mike Shonlaw, excuse me, Mike Shonlaw, Douglas County GIS Administrator. Yeah, the product that we're acquiring here is used daily by almost every city and county department. So it's really a core tool that people, departments use in various ways. We've been acquiring this type of product for about 30 years, since 1993 was the first project. I would call this one of the best values that the city and county get as a result of good collaboration between other partnering agencies. Mike mentioned some of the agencies we work with. The Papio Natural Resource District is another big partner, as well as surrounding counties and cities. So what we've been able to do over that 30-year period is get better and better products at a lower and lower cost. And so I'm happy to say, this year's agreement is the lowest amount we've ever paid for this product, the city's share of it. So we're driving that in the right direction and really getting good value out of the product. It's used by almost every department every day, including Public Safety.
Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Down to, thank you so much. Down to items 47, 48, and 49, these are the items as it relates to lead removal. Ms. Weston had come up to, before us, and asked a few questions regarding our selection of this particular company. And at this time, I would like for someone to answer the questions that she presented to us regarding the selection of MEYLAN Enterprises.
Good afternoon, councilmember. Steve Zibney, City of Omaha Planning Department. Mailin Enterprises is a local company, started in 1975. It's a women-owned business. And when they approached us, we sat down and had some discussions with them about their experience and what services they can provide. Yes, their website does mention industrial cleaning. They do a good share of work in the power plant setting. They do cleaning of grain processing facilities, on and offline boiler cleaning, they do a lot of coal-fired plant cleaning, extensive high-pressure line cleaning, ashbin cleaning. But they do do some specialized work also. As their website mentioned, they have some specialty services, explosive soil remediation, they do some explosive tank detonation cleaning. So they're really versed in very specialized work that has to deal with handling contaminants and being careful handling those contaminants, making sure their workers are safe, making sure the plant personnel is not impacted or hurt or exposed to anything. So we felt that the work that they did there, it could easily be utilized in the soil remediation process as well. They're well-versed in transporting hazardous materials. And so the services that they provided, as I said, we felt they would be able to handle this work as well. And this work was open bid, competitively bid, with them providing the lowest prices for that work.
So are there any projects that we could speak to that they have done in terms of lead remediation?
No, they're a new contractor to the program, yes. So no, no, I couldn't speak to any lead remediation programs they have, as they are a new contractor to the program. This is their first winning bids for the program.
Okay. And as you know, earlier today, we were engaged in conversation with EPA. So I would ask that their guidelines and their training and things of that nature as it relates to this, how will we be able to measure that they're meeting those guidelines? Those skills specification that Ms. Weston had alluded to earlier?
They have the trained personnel, they had certifications, and the trained personnel has WAPA training that's needed for this work. We also, our daily inspections of the work that we have with our city staff are out there on a daily basis, checking every site. So we're making sure that all the lead-safe work practices, safe remediation practices are being conducted, everything's being conducted safely, it's being transported safely, it's being cleaned off sidewalks and streets safely and not left there, the work sites are being cleaned every day, and that the owners' concerns are addressed as well. So we have very good oversight of these contractors.
And so those certifications that they have, you receive copies of those certifications?
Yes.
So you have that information available?
Yep, trained personnel, correct.
Okay, would it be safe to say that with you, how many, did you only receive two bids, or how many did you receive?
I think we received four.
Okay.
From four contractors.
Okay, so what stood out significantly enough to cause you to arrive at the decision of selecting this contractor?
Well, primarily based upon the bid amount. We say lowest and best bid, so we feel that the vetting that we did upfront with them, pre-qualifying them, is the best bid, and their price was the lowest bid. They were, the range was pretty close, is a couple of the bids for the lowest, you know, the second, next lowest bidder. So we felt it was within the range that was tolerable.
Okay, and again, earlier, we, in our pre-council, we talked a little bit about their diversity, equity, and inclusion. Can you speak to that?
So I did have a conversation with HRR since then, with Christian Espinoza, and there was a question on if the DEI plan was required on these contracts, and that's for contracts over $500,000. So each of these contracts is under that threshold, so that was not a requirement for these.
So we have a threshold of $5,000?
$500,000.
$500,000.
And you're not able to, he would explain to me, is that someone may be asked, well, those three contracts together would be over $500,000, but that's not, they can't be added together, it's per contract, is what my understanding from Christian was.
So could you have lumped together all three and made one contract?
We generally bid them out separately because we want to give the opportunity for contractors, for more contractors to win, if you will. So that's why we, and historically, we've done this, we've bundled them only in 10 to 15 groups, as far as properties go, in an effort to allow other contractors to win those bids. So that's how we've structured this, and that's how we've been doing it.
So we have no way to measure if, what their workforce looks like, or, you know, are they, you know, how are they performing in that regards?
Well, I know we've had some conversations with them about the workforce, and they've been engaging some local workers that have been on other contractors in the past. Obviously, those folks have experience with this work. So they've got some of their own staff that they're using, but they're also going to be expanding their workforce as well. So they've been engaging in some of those conversations with those workers from those past contracts.
So for me, the lead remediation is primarily going to be done in East Omaha. And it serves as an opportunity for individuals in this area where poverty is at its all-time high, would have an opportunity to gain meaningful employment and be sufficient enough to provide for their families. So when we have these opportunities to have companies like this, and I'm not seeing many individuals from this area, East Omaha, that would benefit from that, and there is no mechanism in which we are assuring that that's happening, that's somewhat of a disservice because this is a great opportunity to close those gaps.
Can you clarify with individuals, are you saying contracting companies or the individual workforce?
The workforce.
Okay, because if there's anyone that's in East... Because if there's anyone that's in Eastern Omaha that can do the specialty work, I'll have them talk to me.
Well, we need to, I believe we need to be concerned with not only the workforce, but also having opportunities for the contractors to come from this area as well.
I would encourage anyone also to contact, you know, Mayland. They are looking for people, so there's an, could be an opportunity there. As was mentioned in our meeting with the EPA earlier today, there isn't one scheduled now, but last year, we held a Super JTI Training Conference. So I think they'll be doing that again here in our community. So that's going to be another great opportunity to get some more folks trained up in this and given, get opportunities, even career opportunities in that, so, yes.
All right, thank you so much.
You bet.
We were also in the pre-council. We talked a little bit about parks. Now that we're into spring, there is lots of opportunities in the area of the Parks Department in terms of allocating workforce and opportunities. And Matt, you had earlier stated that you would speak to that today?
Yes, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. That is correct. We do have several employment opportunities available through Parks and Recreation. I would encourage anybody from any part of the city to look into that opportunity. We are trying to build our workforce for the season to accomplish everything that is part of our goals in terms of serving in the city parks.
And can you speak to being intentional about giving opportunities for individuals such as contractors and others beyond being employed by the Parks Department?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. We do have some specific opportunities that we reach out about, specific to city guideline and policy. Again, we would encourage anybody who meets the specifications for any of those bids or specific requested work or service to apply to that process. And we always are evaluating every aspect of that to make the best choice for the city and the use of our funds for Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next question I have is regarding item number 58. And this is for the Omaha Housing Authority. Joni, oh, there you are.
Yes, ma'am.
Joni, you kind of spoke a little bit about, or answered some of Ms. Weston's questions. But as I met with you and talked with you about this nagging concern in the public eye regarding OHA, and we kind of talked about how that doesn't give a good picture to not only the city council, but as well as your organization as we are continuing to field these calls as they come in regarding bedbugs. It seems to be a running conversation. While these services that we're talking about on 58 are not directly related, but I do understand Ms. Weston's concern that we are allocating funds to your organization, and yet, for lack of a better word, we still are having some issues with Omaha Housing Authority as it relates to tenants with bedbugs and things of that nature. It makes it very difficult for, as I shared with you back in December when we had the Spencer East, the fact that those apartments had been up and not demolished for quite some time and how that impacted individuals in District 2. And we, and I really kind of had a really heart-to-heart conversation about how that impacts me as an individual as I have to field those questions over and over and over again. So I'm not directly saying anything about your organization, but these concerns are continuing to pop up. So what, do we have a plan of action in which we are going to address that? And if we do, if you would kindly tell me as well as others how we plan on addressing these concerns that are popping up over and over again?
Yes, so I've met with Council President Festerson, Councilmember Begley, Councilmember Rowe. I've spoke at length with you, Councilmember Johnson. All of the council members have received updates continuously from myself over the last six weeks or more with regard to follow-up on the recent media stories regarding the towers, specific information related to OHA responses and partnership with Douglas County Health Department, and collaboration, cooperation with city code enforcement, and kind of all of those different pieces, all of the different plans and updates that we have, that we've gone through, that we've committed to, and the different steps that we're taking, invitations for anyone at any time to come to any of the properties and contact me for any sort of a tour. Councilmember, our Council President Festerson came and toured through Underwood Tower and has followed up extensively with me on that. Councilwoman Johnson, you provided me with a complaint that a constituent of Councilmember Begley's had provided. Within 24 hours, we had inspected the unit and promptly responded. So we will continue to do all of those things and continue to follow the plan that we provided.
So how will we directly resolve the issue of the continuation of the calls regarding bedbugs? Because this is not something just started today. I remember last year, bedbugs was an issue. So it seems to be a constant theme, and whether that be education, whether that be messaging through the media regarding what's being done with OHA on a regular. I guess I kind of need some assurance from you, what we can expect to deal with, effectively deal with the bedbugs that we're continuing to hear. Because we'll have a bedbug issue happen in Florence Tower today, and then next week, we'll have one in Crown Point. And then we go back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and so...
I don't think it's quite fair to indicate that we'll have an issue this week and next week we'll have one somewhere else. I think you were speaking of something that happened a year ago, and then now.
I was generalizing.
Okay.
I wasn't being factual.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. So I think it's critically important that everyone understand that we don't want any of our tenants to live with pests. We want everyone to be pest-free. We employ our own pest control services as well as contracted pest control services. We work with the Douglas County Health Department, and we are also working with the Nebraska Extension Office with epidemiologists to look at, am I using, no, entomologists. I got it, thank you. Entomologists to look at our pest control policies, to provide us with guidance, to provide additional training. We also are working with a former head technical assistance provider. They're working to renew their contract, who developed a program specifically for public housing authorities dealing with pest control issues that is evidence-based, research-based out of Cornell University. Our program is based upon that research in that program. We can and continue to improve in every way we can, look at our policies, look at our procedures, do all of those things. We are also working to get additional service providers to deliver services to our tenants. We are a landlord. We aren't an assisted living facility. We aren't a nursing home. We do have an aging population. We do have a very needy population. So more so, I think, than many places across the city. Our tenants have many, many needs. And they, sometimes their units suffer, and their condition inside their units need additional support and additional help from service providers or family members, or whomever that may be, because of those things. And we are certainly working to try to get additional services to those tenants. I think it's difficult because oftentimes, the level of need that individuals have exceeds what's available sometimes in the community. And certainly, what we can provide is a landlord. So definitely, there are units that are very, very problematic and very concerning and would benefit from additional services. And those are things that we're committed to working with partners to provide and to resolve and continue to have our policies and our procedures assessed by outside entities and make sure that those are the best possible that they can be.
There's been some outcry regarding the level of education that residents have as it relates to reporting these events. Do you think that there would be an opportunity for you to provide media education or something of that nature to educate the community, that these are the proper steps to...
I'm not sure if media would help, but we can certainly provide something. So all tenants are provided with a resident handbook upon taking tenancy of a unit that OHA owns and operates that provides information on how to report a pest issue or any other maintenance issue that exists. Nearly every floor of most towers also indicates how to do that. And then all tenants can also work with either their property manager or their assistant property manager on location to enter a work order as well. I think, I keep picking on you, I'm sorry you were there. But Councilmember Festerson saw the signs in the tower that say this is how you enter a work order and have the specific information about that. They can also call our work order number. If you're hearing that as a concern, I'd be more than happy to talk to our property management department and provide flyers out to every single tenant to remind them of how to do that, if that's an issuer, that's a concern.
Well, as you're aware, I reached out to you regarding how to submit?
The work order, yep, and I'd send you that link.
Right. You also, Paul mentioned earlier today that we have tenants that have some hiccups. They have some hurdles in which they can do things. There are certain mental problems, mental situations. So how effective would that be to expect someone having a challenge such as a mental problem or even health issues? That they would be able to report using an online document or even a paper document? Are there any other vehicles?
Yep, that's not their only options. So tenants can submit work orders online. They can submit them through what's called the tenant portal. That's where tenants also go to pay their rent, those sorts of things. They can also come downstairs and ask, again, their property manager or assistant property manager to actually help them do that. Or they can still call our work order number and talk to an actual person to have that work order entered. So there's multiple different ways that they can do that. We don't expect individuals to do that just one way. Because not just one way works for everyone. Sometimes individuals have connectivity issues or just access issues, different things of that nature.
So as a resident with medical or mental conditions, is there services that can help with helping them? Because if, I mean, if you're having difficulties putting things together and you're having a bed bug, like we had a situ, I had a complaint, and the response was that perhaps they had some mental issues.
Yep. So as far as services go for individuals, OHA does not provide those services. We don't have that in-house. However, we do partner with a variety of different organizations who deliver that, depending on who the tenant is and what services they might be eligible for. That could be very wide-reaching. There might be an individual who is receiving services through community alliance, and they have a community worker who comes to assist them. There might be individuals who have assistance through, something through like Medicare or Medicaid, an approved caregiver through one of those resources. There could be individuals through like maybe the Intercultural Senior Center who receive their support. Maybe individuals through their church have, you know, like an in-home outreach program that a number of churches or others provide. It really kind of varies as to who provides that level of assistance and that level of support. When we become aware of somebody's needs, we certainly attempt to get in contact. So like the person that we were talking about the other day, contacting his family to find out, hey, are you guys checking on him pretty regularly? He's got some, seems to be maybe losing a little bit of time and isn't always, you know, maybe here present, might need checked on from time to time, making sure that's happening. And if that's not, then setting up a provider in the community if we can. If that doesn't happen, then really it gets to a point where we have to talk about, can you live independently? Because maybe you can't. And that is hard, I think, probably for any of us who've had to have those conversations with parents or loved ones. But that's what we end up facing.
So if you were to say off the top of your head, how many residents might you have that don't have the ability to have family members to help in those, in the situation we just described?
Sure.
Or is willing to receive that additional help from providers?
I think the vast majority of individuals have either family members or would receive that help from a provider. I would say, you know, 90% or close to it have someone or are willing to talk to someone and to get that help. There's really a small amount who are at a point where they don't want to accept that assistance or maybe, from a mental health perspective, just aren't in a position to do so. I would say most people do, but even 10% of people in a tower that has 100 units, that's a lot, right?
Right.
So I think that sometimes that can, you know, if you have one unit on every floor that's not doing great and in some form of trying to get help or trying to figure that out, then that's where you're seeing some of those struggles.
And so if we take that a little bit further and we have one person on every floor that's in that situation, might be experiencing bed bugs?
Potentially, not always, but maybe just has like some housekeeping issues or something else, sure.
Then that could multiply very rapidly.
Yep, absolutely. And that's why we do inspections. That's why we also, if somebody refuses treatment, we say we have to at least come in and inspect and look. And if there is an issue, you can't refuse treatment. We do go through that, but it is a process because the tenants still have rights. The tenants can still say, if they, if they give us something from a doctor or it looks like it's from a doctor, and they say, my doctor says that you can't spray in here, we have to come in and say, it's a condition where we have to. You can't, you can't live like this. But it has to get to that point before we can do anything because they have rights as a tenant. So there is this balancing act where we're trying to intervene, and we have limits to do that. That's where, again, those caregivers or those family members come in helpful. But also, as we all know, when we've been in those roles, it's hard to be there 24/7 when we're taking care of ourselves and our family members.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely.
Let's see, 58. We have the Visi, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have the Visitors Bureau, number 71.
Hi, good afternoon, Deborah Ward, the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, 120 South 31st Avenue.
Thank you. And I'm just going to ask you to repeat what you said during our pre-council.
Sure. What we have on the agenda today is a resolution for a $72,000 marketing partnership with Association Forum. They're a Chicago-based organization that has 4,000-plus members that represent about 1,700 organizations, all that hold meetings across the country. And so our goal with this partnership is to convince those 1,700, not all of them, but a majority of those 1,700 to come and hold their meeting or event in Omaha. This partnership gives us advertising in Association Forum magazine. And on their website, we get to do four editorials in their magazine. We also get to host a 15-to-20 meeting planner event in Chicago. We have recognition at all of their events. We have trade show, registration in space. And we also get to work with this organization to bring 12 to 16 of their meeting planners into Omaha to basically familiarize themselves with the city, all with the goal to increase awareness of Omaha and to book more business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I want to say to Steve, on items 47 through 49, you don't have to get up. I just want to say that I think over the... I just want to say that I think over the last probably year we've challenged you, we want to have local contractors, we wanted to have more local contractors. So now you went out and you found a local contractor and I noted out of the four bidders, Malin was the only local bidder. Now, there was one from Valley, so same county, but the other ones were other cities outside. In fact, one was in another state. So I really appreciate the fact that you identified a contractor, a local contractor that has the capability to learn how to do this. And I would think if they can do hazardous materials, chemicals, grain bins, boiler rooms, explosives with the training, they should be able to do the lead removal. And so I'm, I think that that's definitely a bonus that they were the lowest bidder and also a local company, so most likely with local employees. So I think that's great. In regards to number 58 to the OHA, I just wanted to make a couple comments. First of all, the funding is coming from the 2023 Home Program. I think we have some funding from the Choice Neighborhood Grants, but in particular to the 30 homeless and disabled, even if there are things we want OHA to do better, which I think we, it's a struggle. It's always going to be a struggle. Joni, I understand that. But I think to say let's defund them until we get what we want is probably not the right way to do it, especially when you're talking about rental assistance for 30 units. So if we don't fund them, then you could have 30 homeless or disabled people that now are homeless again or going to be homeless. So when I've worked with people in need of rental assistance in the past, I want to say my number one priority is to try and keep somebody in their home. So I would suggest that we continue to work with OHA and try and find solutions, try and figure out how we can help, how we can partner, and maybe what other partners we can have in order to assist, especially when it comes to, I know the bed bug issue is probably one of the biggest issues. Even when I was going through other rentals with that, for the voucher program that have nothing to do with OHA, that's a common problem for other landlords as well. And I think hopefully OHA will be able to increase how they deal with this and then can maybe share that with some of the other landlords in our city because no one should live like that. But I understand it's sometimes a difficult problem. And the thing is, is we need all the partners to work together and one of those partners also needs to be the renters. And so we also want to bring them into it as well so that they have knowledge, education, and that they also know that they, you know, we all need to work together in order to solve some of these problems. So I definitely support item number 58 because I, again, I don't want to see any more people who are starting or getting back on their feet from experiencing homelessness or are disabled to lose their housing. And I think I just had one other one and it was on number 45 on MAPPA. I just want to say I think that that aerial photography, it's fabulous. I have seen some of what you can do with that and I absolutely commend everyone for actually collaborating with all the different agencies. You mentioned, you know, MUD, OPPD, different cities, the counties. And what you did is you all went in together to purchase a product that now you're getting more for less and basically everyone's benefiting. So I just think that that's a really good government spending story. So I just wanted to say thank you for that and I really appreciate it. So, and nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple more points on Malin Enterprises. They are headquartered here in Omaha. But maybe more importantly, and the question was raised earlier, is that, you know, whether or not they were qualified to do the work. In bold letters of the application, it says that if you are not pre-qualified, then your bid will be considered non-qualified for those purposes. So, and I think Steve addressed that, they are qualified, they're headquartered in Omaha. They have locations in four other states, including Texas, Illinois, Kentucky, and Iowa. I think they're very well-known and respected in, with their work and they wouldn't be, they wouldn't have been considered for awarded the bid had they not been pre-qualified. So I just want to point that out. Just because we didn't maybe publicly ask the question if they were pre-qualified doesn't mean that we hadn't looked into that and made sure that they were pre-qualified in order for them to receive the bid. And not only were they pre-qualified, but as Steve pointed out, they were the lowest bidders on each of those contracts. One other item that I thought about when we were going through some of those discussions is, you know, the question was whether or not we could have lumped those together. And I think Steve also addressed that in part by saying that we wanted to make sure that there were opportunities maybe to have other companies be, you know, win the awards. And I think one of the things that's also part of that answer, not necessarily maybe how this one resulted because one company got it, but knowing they have the capacity to do it still addresses what I was going to say is that the main issue we're trying to do is address the lead issue and get it resolved or get it remediated so that kids aren't suffering from lead contamination. And so if by separating or putting those in groups of 10 or 15 and we can get multiple awards or a company like Malin who has the capacity to do all that work at once, again, I think the major concern or the major item we should be concerned about is making sure that that work gets done as quickly as possible so that kids aren't continuing to be exposed to lead.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. I too, I was not familiar with Malin Enterprises. I know a lot of contractors in town, but I didn't know them. So I did a little bit of look, just background, you know, to get some background information from them. And I appreciate, you know, Tom Rose's ability to vet these contractors and I'm sure he did a great job. I looked up the, on the website for Malin Enterprise, they have a fairly robust website, but this, I just wanted to read a paragraph from the president-owner of the company. "Our vision is a diverse workplace that showcases the talents and skills of our employees. The employees are the key to Malin's success. They have the ingenuity to meet the needs of our customers and the experience to generate optimal results. Here at Malin, we strive to enhance our corporate values to achieve customer satisfaction. We combine experience and leadership with a clear vision for the future, always challenging ourselves to be the best and continuing to grow." And that was written by the owner, Nancy Graham Cagle. And then I went on to look a little bit more because as I mentioned in my opening remarks, economic prosperity for our community is important to all of this. And I didn't drive by the headquarters, but I'm guessing there's a help-wanted sign on the front door. And I looked on the website and sure enough, they are hiring immediately today laborers, foremen, supervisors, Class A drivers with full benefits, even including a 401K plan. So if you're looking for a good job, it's going to be a fairly significant job here in Omaha. Stop by 6225 South 60th Street. I know they'll be glad to talk to you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks.
Mr. President, also on number 58, I did some looking into the contracts that were submitted and the bid that was given to Malin. And Mr. Kuzey, just a couple questions for you, please.
Matt Kuzey, Law Department.
I had asked you if any of the Davis Bacon federal laws apply to these contracts. And if I'm reading this correct, anything over $100,000, then that means under the Davis Bacon and related acts, that these federal contracts, that those David Bacon laws do apply.
And you were asking that on 58?
I think it's 47.
I am sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. You stopped me for a minute. No, sorry, I wasn't trying to give you that curveball. That's correct.
Yes, I looked into it and based on some of the research that I did, when you asked me that question, it does appear that the Davis Bacon Act does apply to these federal funds from the EPA.
Okay, and in those different bullet points of it, that applies to the workers that would be on these jobs, there's provisions on overtime requirements, if there's violations of liability for unpaid wages, liquidated damages, if they're withholding unpaid wages and liquidated damages. There are provisions for even subcontractors that work on this. Is that correct, if I'm reading this correctly?
Yes, in that document from the EPA, those standards are laid out in there.
Okay, and anti-retaliation, if workers are on this job, if they have any, so there are worker protections for people under this federal contract from the EPA of these local workers at Malin. And again, Malin, I'm sure is a great contractor. Councilman Rowe kind of went through it, Councilman Harding and others. I'm sure they're going to do great work, but if there are issues with the workers on this or any EPA contract, those rules for workers do apply.
Matt Kuzey, Law Department. Sorry, I had something in my eye. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kuzey.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
I want to thank my fellow council members for giving so much attention to a contractor in my district. So, thank you.
There's no further lights. Is there a motion on items 18 through 72, or 19 through 72?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Row call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you for your testimony.
Item 73 and 74 can be considered together for a Southwest Branch Public Library near 204th and F Streets. Item 73, an ordinance to approve a real estate purchase and sale agreement. Item 74, a resolution to approve a recommendation from the Omaha Public Library Board of Trustees to purchase property for a library.
Public hearing and vote on items 73 and 74 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office. Happy to answer any questions about 73 and 74.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm fully in support of this ordinance and resolution, as you, I'm sure, are aware. I mentioned earlier the momentum that's happening in the city of Omaha and our library services are a big part of that. We're working, the iron's going up on the top floor for the new Central Library at 72nd and Dodge, which is a world-class facility that you're all going to be proud of. And last week, they went over the top on the fundraising goal, so it's paid for with, really very little city participation in comparison to the size of the project. So it's a thrilling part to be a part of that. But we've been working on, I remember, and I don't remember the person's name, but I think it was the first week I sat here, we were talking about the library, maybe it was in the first month, and we were talking about the move of the Central Library. And there was a gentleman that sat in the last row on the end right here and he came forward and he looked me right in the eye and he said, Councilmember Rowe, you realize that there is a library desert in your district, don't you? I mean, he was that pointed. I said, well, we do have the Millard Library in District 6, but you're right, we don't have a library in Southwest Omaha. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank Laura, to thank Marco and their team for diligently working on the first step. So this is a first step in a long process to build a branch in District 5, Southwest Omaha. It's about as far southwest as you can get, but we're developing that way and that library will be well-used and well-loved by our neighbors in that neighborhood. So thank you, Marco and Laura. Appreciate your work.
Thank you. Laura, I know you had to step out. Was there anything you'd like to add?
Hi, Laura Marlene, Omaha Public Library. I just want to thank you all for considering this. I want to thank Councilman Rowe for his support in making this happen. We're just really pleased to have found a location and we'll be ready to go, probably 2027. So thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Row call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 75, an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 41621, to amend an agreement with BMW Company, Inc., for machine street sweeping services.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Just public hearing today on that one.
Item 76, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Bardova Innovations, Inc., in the amount of $50,000 for the purchase of uniforms to be utilized at the Street Maintenance Division.
Public hearing on number 76 is today. It's got to be the number 76, right?
I was trying to figure something out in my head. Yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson E. Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And you had said at the last meeting, but you was absent last time, I couldn't ask you last week or the last time you was here. You said Krullen. So from point A to point B, with these new uniforms that you're talking about, will they be able to go with these new uniforms and catch those folks who are bringing this heavy equipment in and tearing up the city streets and blaming the mayor for chuckles?
All right. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 77, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to provide professional design phase services on the Old South Interceptor Force Main Asset Evaluation and Plan for Future Use Projects.
Public hearing on number 77 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 78, an ordinance to rescind the 27 Leavenworth Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 78 is today. Proponents, please.
Don Seaton, City Planning, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 79, an ordinance to approve a Second Amendment to the Atlas Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 79 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Don Seaton, City Planning, and again, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
Lawrence Butler, 4809 Northwest Radio Highway, here to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 80, an ordinance to approve the Walter Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 80 is today. Proponents?
Yes, Don Seaton, City Planning, and again, I'm here for any questions.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 81, an ordinance to approve the bid of Miller &amp; Sons Golf Cars in the total amount of $291,744 for the lease of 72 gas-powered golf cars.
Public hearing on number 81 is today. Proponents, please.
You know, Mr. Festerson, I've been thinking about you at Benton for a long time.
So it's got to be to the golf carts, Donnie.
Yes, sir. Mr. Festerson, City Council, Omaha, Nebraska. Donnie R. Johnson, Johnson E. Question Foundation. I just wanted to remind a man for Park and Recreation, my whole entire career of high school, I was in Park and Recreation every summer. And at Mancuso's at Civic Auditorium, and at Mr. Catania and Mr. C.'s Restaurant, they said, that black Angus that they're going to sell at the 4H, it will help me get a Nebraska Roll-Aid.
You've got to speak to the golf carts. Any other proponents on the golf carts? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing closed.
Item 82, an ordinance to establish a Class A flammable liquids storage district, number 80-166, located at 11550 Rainwood Road.
Public hearing on number 82 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 83, an ordinance to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Interlocal Agreement for Fire and Emergency Services for the purchase of a water tender truck from the North Platte Fire Department in the amount of $190,000.
Public hearing on number 83 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, good afternoon, Kathy Bossman, Omaha Fire Chief, 1516 Jackson. I'm here as a proponent for I- I'm here as a proponent for item number 83 and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
I had to get to you before you sat down. While you're walking up, I'll start my question. I'm sorry, I had to leave pre-council this morning a little early, so I didn't get a chance to ask you this, but when I was reading through the material, I was a little confused. Is the rig going to actually be used for educational purposes, or is it going to be put into service?
It would be put into service. It's essentially a payment for the educational services.
So it's the payment and we'll the educational because of...
They preferred, Elkhorn approached the city and asked if it would be appropriate. They preferred to purchase an item for us rather than pay the $40,000 fee per year.
For education.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 84, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 1 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "In General," by adding Section 20-9 to provide for a requirement that motor vehicles and motorcycles park or be stored on hard-surface driveway or paved path adjacent to the driveway outside of a residence, as amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department.
Thank you. The public hearing on number 84 is today. We're going to start with a brief overview by Mr. Kuzey as to what the ordinance does, and then we'll take proponents and opponents.
Matt Kuzey, City of Omaha Law Department. The ordinance you have before you was prepare the request of Councilman Hug. It would create a new ordinance that would require parking on a hard-surface driveway or a paved path adjacent to the driveway. This code change would provide some definitions. We're talking about motor vehicles. The term "motor-driven cycle" is used. That is essentially referring to a motorcycle. This ordinance was drafted by myself with the assistance of Kevin Slim, the city prosecutor. So he provided some guidance in that regard. But it does make it an offense, a criminal offense, for either the operator or registered owner to park on a surface that is not a hard-surface driveway or a paved path. And it also puts the liability on the person who allows it to occur on their property. This is only applying to operable vehicles. Operable vehicles are deemed to be anything that displays a current plate, and the offense is punishable by up to $500 if convicted in trial. This would be based on citations that would be issued. This would be a question that the Law Department received was, is this a misdemeanor, or is this an infraction? And since it's a fine only, there's no possibility of any incarceration. It would be considered the equivalent of an infraction. The amendment of the whole before you came from Councilman Hug's request of the Law Department, it does provide a different operable date. As you're aware, the charter sets a minimum 15 days after passage in order to go into effect. Councilman Rowe, or excuse me, Councilman Hug wanted to give additional time for that. And also, I think after Councilman Hug had a conversation with the Planning Department about the term "residential district," he wanted that removed, and it would apply to any zoning district. This kind of, I think Councilman Hug said this morning, it has changed a little bit for the current procedure. It is already outlined in the Planning Code, in our zoning code, that you cannot park on the grass or anything that's not a hard-paved surface or not a paved path. That already exists in the code, and it's typically been enforced by code inspectors within the Planning Department. This would also allow the Omaha Police Department to enforce this particular ordinance here in the city limits. Currently, Prosecutor's Office is able to enforce our zoning laws. The offense for that would be a Class 4 misdemeanor, which is, carries a much lower fine, the possibility of a much lower fine, but that does exist in state law already. However, this would give the authority to enforce this offense to the Omaha Police Department. It does not allow for towing or anything like that. It simply only allows for the issuance of a criminal citation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take proponents.
Hello, Sean Weeblehouse, 5018 South 53rd Street. I'd like to thank Councilman Hug for bringing this to everyone's attention. It's, I live in a really nice neighborhood, or what used to be in the Holy Ghost area. Frank Stoich, 52nd, Frank Stoich meets 52nd Q Street area. And in the last three to four years, it's, Old Street has become, I like a haven for crappy landlords. I don't know any other way to put it. There's a language barrier, and there's several cars parked in yards, and most of them aren't even licensed. I mean, there's campers. I don't know what they do with these vehicles, whether it's a, an attempt to sell vehicles or fix them up and sell them, I'm not exactly sure, but it's really bad. It's forcing people to move out of the neighborhood. In fact, we're looking for a house now, but maybe something will change for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Emily Anderson, 1717 Benton Street. I'd like to speak as a proponent for this, that there's a way to provide citations for people who are parking in places that they shouldn't be, because in my experience, there's a lot of issues with, you know, like, the neighborhood looking like a large parking lot instead of a neighborhood, because people are parking all over. There's issues with blocking sidewalks, which makes it, you know, that it's already not terribly accessible, but it makes it even less accessible when cars are blocking sidewalks. So I don't know if this necessarily, I hope that this applies also to being able to cite individuals for parking, you know, in other situations, like Benton Street, commercial area, that people are parked on the sidewalk, et cetera. So that's my concern, but otherwise, I would like to voice my support for this. I guess, like, in the past, I've tried to call the city hotline, and I've done it repeatedly, knowing that it's not going to be taken care of, because it's code enforcement that takes care of this, meaning it's going to take, maybe be, I assume that it means that it's taken care of over, you know, a couple days, or a week, or two weeks, whereas it needs to be done within, you know, a number of hours or days, because I don't know that code enforcement can take on this issue of providing citations for parking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Councilman Gernat, welcome.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Gary Gernat, 1702 Ontario Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. I stand in support of item number 84. From a historical perspective, for those of you that took the time to get to know me recently, I have 47 years of law enforcement and administrative experience under my belt. Item 84 addresses the eyesore and downgrade of the integrity of neighborhoods by parking motor vehicles, motorcycles, on non-hard surfaces such as lawns and grass, dirt as well. Since 1969, I can assure you that this was a problem then, and even within the last two to four years, it's still haunting the city, citywide. I see it when I'm on my walks, driving around town, riding with friends, or even volunteering with the Omaha Coalition of Citizen Patrols. I'm sure you, in your lifetime, have seen these large tool trucks that pull up in front of auto dealerships and auto repair shops. Mechanics are able to get the latest and greatest tools, manuals, and software, so they can maintain vehicle safety and efficiency. In my opinion, government should continue to provide their officials tools to maintain the integrity of our wonderful neighborhoods. During both of my tenures, I had limited success in addressing this issue. I admit. Not a total failure, limited success. Those blockages back then have either retired or passed on. Mindsets towards the missions of neighborhood alliances were weak, in my humble opinion. And back in the day, west of 72nd Street, may not have experienced this issue. If that continues today, which I just heard that it does, be assured, it will be coming to a theater near you, and you will have your turn in the barrel. I feel I can speak factually. I have been where you are at right now, and I've experienced the practical application of the current measures that are in place in our neighborhoods outside these doors. If I could cite just one example in my defense, that would be instilling in the minds of violators that their wallets may be infringed upon. Typically, compliance follows. Again, this is a citywide quality-of-life issue. If you are not a violator, this does not affect you. A little bit of advice, keep it that way. In closing, council members, I ask you to support this amendment when it comes up for vote, and until then, ponder this question. Are you willing to take the risk of not doing anything and letting a legislative measure pass through your fingers that would continue to solidify a pathway to solving this quality-of-life issue? Be that mechanic that wants to do it the right way. Thank you. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, my name's Abe Blinken. I live at 5501 North 3rd Street, down there where they're trying to take the houses out and stuff. Everybody lives down there on gravel roads. Does this go for gravel driveways and stuff, too?
We can get that question answered here in a minute, if you want to stick around.
Okay. Well, I was just kind of wondering on that, because that's all we have down there, is, you know, got a little gravel on our roads and then what we got in our driveways, so that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other proponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1822 Immond Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 6810. When this first came to my attention, as I told Councilman Hug, I was felt that this would be a negative thing against most of North and South Omaha, where it would be, have the greatest impact upon people. And as I explained to him, many people live in our neighborhood, and I said "neighborhood," just like these other people have said "neighborhood." Some people would like to label North Omaha as "the hood." It is not a hood. It's a neighborhood. And we have a lot of people, I talked to people who were for this, and a few who are against it. The majority of the people were saying, you know, "This is good that we have something because we have worked hard." Most of the people are land, are property owners. They're elderly, they're older. They're afraid to say something to these individuals who park these cars and trucks and repair things up on the lawn and the sidewalk, because it just takes one or two to tear down your neighborhood. And I keep stressing, and I always tell the young kids is, stop allowing people to call where you live a hood. You are in a neighborhood. The people make the neighborhood. And so, most of the people, particularly in the 12-block area that I went and talked to, those neighbors are for this, and we hope that it will be done fairly. I did have some questions, and Mr. Hug and Mr. Kuzey were able to answer those. The concerns that he mentioned in his, giving his summary of the law and everything that was changed, he has answered those. And there was just one other thing that I forgot to ask you. Can you make the complaint anonymously? Because that was a fear, so hopefully you'll address this afterwards, is can you make that complaint anonymously? But on the whole, most people are in favor of this in what I can speak to from North Omaha, and I'm sure, as I said, there were some that were opposed. And then some of the people that I had talked to, they had been told, "Well, if you don't like it, you don't have to live here." Well, I told them, I would tell them, "I'm a land property owner, and you're just a renter. I bought my property and I want to keep it up." So I think that this is a good move, and as former councilman said, let's use it, but let's be fair with it. And so I hope, and then I also want to thank you, Councilman Hug, for getting this extended so that instead of having it take effect in 15 days, it won't take effect until August, to give us time to talk to our neighbors and our neighborhood associations, to let them know that this is going to take place and it's available. So I'm totally in support. And, any questions? I know this is going, this is something, I'm in support of this.
Thank you. And we'll get your question answered about anonymous complaints here in a minute, too. Any other proponents that want to speak? Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Patrick Dempsey, and I'm here on behalf of the Omaha Police Officers Association, 13445 Crier Avenue. I'm here today to speak as a proponent of the proposed city ordinance change, which would allow the Omaha Police Officers the ability to cite a party who parks a vehicle in a residential yard. Sounds like a small violation for something the city code enforcement should continue to handle, but the reality is that most city departments across the city are understaffed, and the complaints are starting to pile up. As an OPOA representative, nobody wants to look out their front door and observe a vehicle parked in their neighbor's yard. First, it's a hazard for kids playing, as they must always be aware of the vehicles on the street. Now they have to be aware of the vehicles backing out of yards as they continue to play in these small residential areas. Second, it's an enforceable citation that law enforcement can use as a tool when called to disturbances over neighbors when this issue arises. The language change does not say "must" or "will." It just gives responding officers an enforcement action when dealing with these routine disturbances and complaints. With that, I encourage you to vote to approve the city ordinance change, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, opponents, please.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Said drive around Omaha, particularly the older neighborhoods, there used to be spots on the parking between the sidewalk and the street that people would have to lease from the city. Far as I know, that's not enforced anymore. You still left some concrete pads and some signs, but I don't know of anybody that enforces it. But there are an awful lot of people that park between the property and the street. I don't see any of those getting enforced, pulled, hauled away or anything. There's a few park areas in the Dundee area, for example, Mr. Frederson, 52nd and Lafayette. There's a triangle there, and there's parties with Creighton students that are moving in for density reasons and various other things, that people park in that area. They don't get hauled away. But as you build for density by changing the zoning for houses in our area, our typical single-family homes usually, but allowing now five and six people to live in them. What you've brought to them are an excessive number of vehicles, and there is no place to park for all of those vehicles and the existing and there is no place to park for all of those vehicles and the existing residents. You've even heard about this in other areas of Omaha. With your high-rise density thing, there's no place for everybody to park. So you need to rethink some of this stuff. And on this, you're maybe violating citizens' rights again. And if this is a big problem because of global warming or environmental laws, then ask your state legislature to do this and keep your nose out of it. Because if it's good for Omaha, it ought to be good for every city in Nebraska, right? So let's put a little common sense into it. And then for the last comment today, probably, I do want to make a formal complaint. I'm not going to sue you, sir, under the Open Meetings Act. But you have kicked me out of here a few times for being off topic. And I'm sorry, ma'am, but I do have a slight hearing problem. But what did, what she have to say about the hood and all this other stuff have to do with this item? You have had me escorted out of this chamber before for protesting that type of thing. You would never let me do that. And you let Johnny, Donnie here off-topic all the time. And you kind of giggle about it. Maybe some of the rest of you giggle about it when he leaves. But he's interrupted you a number of times. You don't make him sit down or kick him out because he doesn't shut up.
I made him sit down every single time today, Larry, so.
You at least only apologize. But I will not spend taxpayer money suing you under the Open Meetings Act because your own lawyers don't enforce it.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Other opponents today?
My name is Jenny Sinoiki. I, well, my address is thirty-nine-eleven South Fourteenth Street, six-eight-one-zero-seven. I have a few issues with this. I've sent a few emails. I'll try to keep this as short as I possibly can. My, my main concern is the approach. On driving to work this morning, I saw about within a block or so, couple-block radius on my way to work, just people within my neighborhood, some cars parked on the grass, one of which is off of Thirteenth Street. It's a busy street, parked on the grass next to their house. So my concern with this is whether or not it's going to fulfill the intention it's meaning to carry out because I'm hearing these concerns, but I don't know if this does that. My concern is that it's going to hurt just the person parking on the grass because they don't have off-street parking. And they're going to be hit with a $500 fine and they're expected to put in a paved thing, a paved driveway, but can't afford it. But we're hitting them with $500 fines. We're hitting them with apparently a criminal offense. So let me take a few steps back. My concern is the approach. Are we doing our due diligence for such a harsh policy? I have not seen any town halls. I have not seen any community meetings to discuss this particular problem. Have doors been knocked? Have we walked the neighborhoods and saw a car parked in the grass and went to go knock on their door as a representative to go talk to them and start a dialogue over this? Are they aware of this ordinance? Do we need to educate people? Is that the issue here? Without this piece, without these initial steps, because it feels like we went from one to five and skipped two, three, and four, criminal offense. Without this piece, I don't think it is fair to just move into this next step of a harsher punishment. Especially if you have a monetary fine involved in this. I just, it bothers me. We are taking a chance at putting South Oak constituency in a potentially financially harmful situation and potentially not doing enough due diligence on the front end. And is this going to actually address the problem? Is this going to address the concerns we're hearing? Lastly, I have not received a response on this. I sent it a couple of days ago. I know I included you, Ron Hug, my councilperson. And so I'm just going to make a statement. I don't know if we do this. And I want you to understand the perspective that I'm coming from. I taught for eight years at my alma mater in South Omaha. Taught for eight years, so I've interacted with a kid, students, families within that area off of Twenty-Fourth and L for eight years. Spanish is the second most spoken language in Omaha. From interactions that I've had and from teaching at the school that I taught at, you have households in a great number where Spanish is predominantly spoken. So should this pass, and really in general, but as we're talking about this, this policy, any communication that goes out related to it, any warnings, any notifications, it should be going out in English and in Spanish. To not do so, to not do so, especially when subjected to a hefty fine, a criminal offense is a major equity issue. Because my further concern with this, are we ensuring that we are not inadvertently punishing people based solely on a language barrier? Do people know? I think this item needs more work. That's my stance. It needs more due diligence. And the way the policy is written, I'm afraid it might not address the concerns that we just heard. And I hear those concerns and I, and I see what's going on around South Omaha. But I'm just afraid it might not address the concerns that are being said here. And I'm really concerned that it might do more harm than good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience today?
Good afternoon, everyone. I just, I said I wasn't going to speak, but I think I need to because I've gotten so much misinformation. Enemy, Crimmon Johnson, thirty-fourty North Forty-Fifth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-four. My main issue with this ordinance, I know we have one in place now that is complaint-driven, which it doesn't seem like is being utilized because everyone's saying it's not being enforced, which it should be. But now you want to put this ordinance on here. I kind of agree with some of what the young lady said. You're going to put a monetary charge on this, which me, in my predicament, I'll get a ticket every day because I have no other choice but to park in my backyard. You say yard, you don't say front or back, so I'm assuming it's the whole yard. So with my case, I have no parking. I'm in the middle. I have a house on the north. I have a house on the south. House on the north has a drive, a garage. House on the south has a garage. They have a driveway that leads up the back of my house to their carport. I have an agreement, which I've always had with the people in that house, that I maintain that driveway during the winter so I can have access to get up there to my yard. And then I have my lawn people dig me a path from the driveway to my house. So now when I bought my house thirty years ago, yeah, I can run up and down them stairs, no problem. Now, the backside, try it if you want. So I cannot get up and down my front stairs, so that's why I have to utilize my backyard. My backyard does not sit where it's on the street. You have to drive up into the backyard. So my backyard is not really visible from the street. But as you say, if the police drive by, see it, they can come up in there and give me a ticket. So I can't afford to put a pad in the backyard. I'm barely affording to pay for the snow removal much as it snows in Omaha. So I think this should be placed on file and did a little more research, go back and try to make the ordinance that's on file be enforced be, before you start tacking charges on to people. Because if the ticket's $500, what are we going to do? And a lot of us don't have no money. I work and I'm retired and I'm still poor. So this is not something that's feasible to the city of Omaha. And it seems like, not to be mean, but the majority of these problems are in South Omaha. I'm in North Omaha. I don't see cars parked on the, on the front yards and all that other stuff. So if it's, this is to distinctly for a certain area, we can't do that. I understand. You have to make it citywide. There's no exceptions that can be made. If you want, you can put me in as an exception. I have no problem with that. Then I was also told about the Zoning Board of Appeals exemption. What makes you exempt? How do you get this exemption? How much time does it take to get this exemption? Do you have to pay for the exemption? This ordinance was just threw up here with no research. Do we have how many complaints that were put in that weren't answered? Do we know if there was any complaints that were put in that weren't answered? See, there's a lot that needs to be reviewed into this before you just throw this on us and then want to charge us every time we get cop parked in the yard. Like I said, with me, it's going to be every day because I park in my yard every day. So I just think this, like the young lady said, there needs to be a little more work done on this or go back and make them start enforcing the old ordinance. But this, my biggest thing is I have no choice but to park in my yard. So what am I to do? Are you going to set up a fund for the people who can't afford to put pads in there so they can get the pads put in there? So we're not stuck with this $500 fine every time we get a ticket? It may not be $500, even if it's $10. You get too many $10 tickets, they add up. So I think this needs to be denied or placed on file and a little more research done until we can figure out what the total amount of complaints are that aren't being answered. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? I know we still have one opponent by Zoom, too, that we'll get to. She's been very patient with us.
Daniel Kessler, sixty-five-thirty-seven Bedford Avenue. That lady who spoke before, I have several Latino, Mexican friends, South American friends, and they say that's normal to park on the yard wherever they can because a lot of people down the street, their cars get hit. They don't have good laws like we do. And then, the reason I'm here is because I saw the news article with Ron Hug and Mike McKnight. And on that news article, what I saw was a one-sided deal. We're just looking at these guys. These other people here are criminals. They're violating. They want to violate this. They want to go against us. They want to drive our property values down. And there wasn't no, like this lady was saying, knocking on doors. Why are you parking your car here? What's going on with you? You know, they, they're talking about getting rid of the cops and having social workers come out to do cop calls. Why don't the city have an organization going to these houses? You know, like she, like she just sent a $500 fine. That could wipe out them. They could be on the streets. They could be not eating for that month. We don't know. We have no clue. And like that lady just says, she has to walk up to, some people may have the same thing. They have to walk up. They got to park in, up here. They may not have the money. And why aren't other neighbors, what, what, I mean, back in the forties, we were more of a community. Somebody's got a problem, they need the money, we go help them. Why can't these neighbors, like this other guy here, moving? That's fine. If that's what he wants to do. This is not my neighbor. It's got CD or whatever they call it. Or let's go, hey, you need some concrete in here? Let's get together. Let's do it all, like the Jehovah Witnesses. They put up buildings in a couple of days. You know, we could all get together, get a committee, knocking on the doors so it's not some angry homeowner, I don't like what you're doing to me, and, you know, start getting agitated even more. So, and some streets are restrictive. They only have one side you can park on. And the street I'm on, that's just lined with cars. There ain't no other public place to park. And some houses may have two or three families in them, and they're just trying to survive from biodomics. And that's why they got to park on the dri, on the concrete, I mean, on the yard because there's no place on the street to park. So I'm totally against this for those reasons. And, Mr. President, will you answer a question for me?
We don't answer questions to testimony.
We don't? Okay. The testimony then is, if Bob buys a house with cash, who owns the house? Does Bob own the house? Does the city own the house, but Bob paid the rights to live there and take care of the house? Or is it a mutual agreement between the city and Bob to ownership of that house? What's going on? Who has the jurisdiction over that land? That's my, my main concern, this whole thing is a jurisdiction. How can the city, if they don't own the land, how can they say, this is what you have to do on this land? To me, that's this abolition of property and land and the application of all rents of land to public purposes. In parentheses, zoning laws are the first step to government property ownership. That's the first plank of the Communist Manifesto. That has been in our country for over a hundred years. They've been trying to push it down our throats. It's happening right here. I'm aware of it now. We all pledge allegiance to that flag and the Constitution. That is a constitutional republic that we pledge allegiance to, not the Communist Manifesto. This has got to stop. It's got to stop here locally, you know, today. Are you going to serve the Constitution Republic or the Communist, the Communist Manifesto? And if you pass this, in my mind and others, you're saying we are communists. We are a communist city. If you don't like it, leave. Or maybe, well, I'm not going to say that. I'm going to go down that road. But please, let's turn the tide and get back to the people's rights. We have you here to serve us. And if this goes through, I say you serve in us. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other opponents in the audience?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, we want to go to Marge here on Zoom. Marge, we'll get you off mute here in a minute, assuming you're still with us. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Sure thing. Thank you very much. My name is Marge Gasnick. I live at one-forty-eight Bancroft Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-eight. I want to express my opposition to this ordinance, kind of for the same reasons that have been expressed. I don't believe that this is an issue that the police should get involved in. I don't think it should be any kind of a criminal infraction. The $500 fine, as has been expressed, it seems really excessive and burdensome for families who live in older neighborhoods that have narrow streets and limited driveways. Somebody talked about language barrier. I know that there are many immigrant families in South Omaha. In my previous neighborhood, before I moved to Omaha, I, I had Hispanic neighbors and I had to talk to them about parking issues. You can do that. People, you can have these conversations. I think that maybe we're just a little too afraid to talk to our neighbors. And I would just ask us to maybe pump the brakes on this a little bit. I understand that if this does pass, that there's going to be some effort to do some educating, informing. Why not go ahead and do it anyway? Make some of this information available in other languages. Some people may not know that they're not supposed to park on their yards. So I just, just don't think that, I think this is too harsh. It's, it's too much. So I ask you to not pass this and maybe take another approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This will end public hearing. We do have several lights on for further dialogue. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. There was a question asked earlier, does this apply to gravel roads? Or if we get anonymous complaints, how will we handle that? I guess that would be for the. I guess that would be for the, um, city planning as well as the law department?
Uh, Dave Anzler, City Planning. Uh, I just, so I'll answer your question, but I wanna make it clear that the planning department's not charged with enforcing Chapter 20, which this ordinance will fall under my department. Is charged with, um, enforcing Chapter 55, which is zoning. So I can speak to the zoning aspect. So back since 1957, there's been a Sydney, city requirement that cars, vehicles shall be parked on hard surface, hard surfaces, just for lack of a better term. And in 1957, it allowed for crushed rock. And then in 1977, that code was changed, the zoning code was changed, excuse me, to, um, remove the crushed gravel option to park vehicles on. And then it was later re-refined in 1987. So the stance that my department has taken is if in 1977, somebody had a crushed gravel parking pad and it has been properly maintained since 1977, then they are not in violation of any city zoning code. But if it has come into disrepair, was overgrown, was removed, um, and not properly maintained and they're parking on mud or grass, or they have thrown, thrown down new gravel to either, um, create a new pad or to bring back to life, for lack of a better term, a pad that had been not properly maintained, then they would be in violation of zoning Chapter 55.
Thank you. So, um, what is our position on, this question may not be for you, Dave, but, um, what is our position on anonymous complaints?
Mackey's Law Department with response to Ms. Weston's question about whether there can be anonymous calls to law enforcement. Yes, there can be.
Okay, and, um, I received an email with a list of questions. Uh, one of them is, what are the repercussions if the ticket is not paid? Will towing be made? Or what else? Will that towing be made by the Arrow Company, contractor, city contractor? Or will it be towed, um, by some other entity? Will they then go to impound and be sent to auction if never bailed out of impound? Uh, the situation that you are, this individual is saying, this situation you are proposing can get out of hand very fast, very quick.
Mackey's Law Department, I'll, I'll attempt to answer. There was a lot of questions in that one grouping, but as I stated earlier, there'd be no towing involved in this. Towing is not part of this ordinance. The vehicle wouldn't get towed. In terms of if you don't pay the ticket, what would happen? As with any other ticket, if the police department issues a ticket, an individual signs the ticket, that's their promise to come to court. They're given a court date. If they come to court, that's where they can exercise all of their constitutional rights, including their constitutional right to enter a plea. And the judge can sentence the person. To be clear, it's up to $500, not $500. Judge can give them a $1 fine, judge can give them a $500 fine, or any amount in between. If the, uh, person does not come to court as they've promised to come to court, as with any other citation issued by law enforcement when that occurs, if the person fails to appear for court, just as if it was a marijuana ticket, speeding ticket, drunk driving ticket, a, uh, bench warrant gets issued for that person's arrest for failure to appear for court. If the fine is not paid, um, if they're convicted at a trial or they enter a plea, if the fine is not paid, there are, uh, mechanisms that give them more time to pay the fine. They can work it off doing community service. There's other, there's those type of opportunities that are available to people.
Okay, um, other questions were, what about times when snow removal and no parking ban is in effect and you're trying to comply by parking off-street and on your property? Is, are there any exceptions for that? Particularly in East Omaha, um, we have a off-number where we're not able to park on off-number street on one day, even number of street on the other day. This is primarily directed, um, to individuals that reside east of Omaha.
Mackey's Law Department, as with the entirety of the city of Omaha when it comes to the snow emergencies, there are no exceptions to the criminal code of the Omaha Municipal Code. So, and that exception is not, such an exception is not contained within this ordinance.
What happens if a contractor parks on the grass to unload wood or access tools, or he's there to do handiwork?
Mackey's Law Department, as there's no exceptions in the ordinance, either the operator of that vehicle could receive a citation or the homeowner, tenant, uh, renter, however you wanna describe it, could also receive a citation.
Thank you. And, uh, earlier today, uh, we had a question in pre-counsel about, um, workforce uh, as it relates to police being 100 men down.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Steve Servini, Deputy Chief with the Omaha Police Department.
Thank you. How will this, um, impact your ability to provide safety, which is your overall objective for citizens of Omaha?
Well, this, as was stated before, it would be a tool for us to handle certain specific situations. In terms of, uh, relativity to the emergencies we respond to, uh, this would, uh, be placed on a, uh, lower priority level with other, other emergencies that we respond to on a higher priority level. Um, you, you mentioned our staffing. We are, uh, currently 105 officers short. So, yeah, we have, we have rearranged things, uh, a little bit to, to address, uh, our Uniform Patrol Bureau to make sure that our, you know, our number one priority is responding to 911 calls.
So, um, with that being said, um, it could somehow give the perception that this being, this, um, policy being applied could appear to be not fair. Based upon the narratives of when the call comes in and your ability to respond to that call.
I'm not sure I quite understand your question.
My question is, is that we have 105 men short. I call in and call in to, not, first of all, I guess I call in to 911. I, wherever I'm calling into, um, which has not been determined yet. But I'm calling in and I'm making a complaint that someone's parking on grass. That person then calls the police and alerts you that this call has taken place. You size up your workload. You may have, you have, I don't know how many officer that day. You may have 40, 50 people working that particular day. And there is already a flood of calls coming in. And based upon priority, because you triage what you're going to respond to. Based on priority, that call may get, uh, addressed within 30 minutes or it may not get addressed for a day. Therefore, with that narrative, then one could perceive that they are being treated unfairly because I today was able to leave my car on the grass for a day and a half because the police department was busy. And on the other hand, my neighbor parks the car on the grass and he is given a ticket within 30 minutes. That's what I mean by that.
That's accurate. It's an accurate description.
So, you know, there has been some conversation that has come forth here today. They were in support of this as long as it was fair. I don't see how it can be managed to be fair when we know that there is a barrier such as what I just described. So again, the majority of the calls that will most likely be called in on will come from East Omaha. There's been some concerns about South Omaha, but not only South Omaha, but North Omaha. East of Omaha, where there are challenges such as what Carmen described as far as infrastructure is concerned, um, that creates barriers to why she has to park on her grass in the backyard is, 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 is the truth. It's a real situation. So this would cause some unfair financial burdens for folks that are already struggling to, to get to have ends meet. Whether that is to buy food for, to put food on the table for their kids or what have you. That's what could happen in this situation. And then we would, we're talking about making decisions that have the effect of a slippery slope. Meaning that now I don't pay my ticket because I have Pampers and I need to buy food in my house, et cetera. And now it moves into a warrant. And then it moves into me being in jail, which then impacts my family even more. So. Sometimes we make decisions without thinking with the end in mind. We just look at the immediate fix. We don't think, because unfortunately, everyone doesn't work on the same, with the same information, the same hurdles, the same struggles, the same whatever. We don't have that. We don't have that ability to have equal playing field for each person.
At the Omaha Police Department, we, we understand, uh, we see the need, uh, at times for this and understand, uh, the, the cause. Uh, and this would provide us a tool, uh, in, in certain situations. If someone is continually parking on, on their grass, we could, uh, send an officer out, just like you described. Be based on a, a priority level of calls and staffing. If that officer was available to respond, she or he, uh, could make contact with the driver or the homeowner, they could issue that citation. But yeah, there certainly are a lot of factors. We do have other means to, uh, address some of the situations that were described here earlier. If a vehicle's blocking a driveway or a sidewalk, those can be immediately removed. I think someone said that there are vehicles that are not licensed. That's a whole other issue. I believe this, uh, would only pertain to operating vehicles that are licensed. So if someone made a call and was expecting someone to be issued a citation, but the vehicle was not operable or licensed, um, no citation would be issued. We do have other means to address that. Basically, a notice is given in a certain amount of timeframe, um, before the officer returns and handles that situation, which can end up in, in an impound.
So there are situations that the vehicle could end, end up in the impound?
Not, not under this ordinance. This would only have, uh, a citation. But under statute, state statute, uh, we can respond to, uh, situations where there are vehicles that haven't been moved on the street and we give them two days to get that moved. If it's moved onto, uh, property and, and, and just, um, in the grass and it's not operable or being driven, they can, the individual can have 10 days to correct that or the vehicle be, could be impounded. But again, that's, that's a statute, uh, and this would not pertain. This ordinance would not allow, um, towing.
So in my community already, we have things in place for semi trucks not to travel down residential streets. And yet, every week, we can check the logs. I'm calling in to report a semi being parked on residential street, which involves the police department having to respond. I've witnessed that it has taken over a day for that truck to be tapped or moved. So to me, this seems like that same scenario to me. When I visualize the response time to address that issue in real time, that's how I see it. That's how I compare it. But I thank you for your time, though.
Absolutely. Happy hour. Thank you.
So, um, in a nutshell, I, I just wanna say on the record, um, I, I just think this is unfair. This will cause an unfair financial impact to, to communities east of Omaha resulting into jail time. And I'm sorry, I'm not, I won't be able to support this as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
Uh, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One of the things that came to mind was like Lamp Park. Sorry, don't mean to bring you into this, Matt. But I was thinking about Lamp Park. It's all gravel and grass. I'd spent many years at Lamp Park watching baseball. So that was just one that popped into my mind. But then we also have churches. So a lot of times, especially on maybe like Easter Sunday, like what we just have, you may have people that are gonna park kind of on the, on the grass when you have that big, the giant wedding, the church, Christmas Eve, children's mass. You know, you see those things where it doesn't happen all the time. It doesn't even happen every Sunday, but sometimes you have those great big services and so you're gonna have some temporary parking. I was just thinking of just things that could come up. People who live off Main, Artorial Streets. I lived off 120th and Prairie Lane, right up, my driveway is on 120th. Therefore, no parking, obviously, on the street in front of my house, um, at the time, or now. And I would have Thanksgiving dinner and it was literally a block down on each side if you wanted to park on a side street and it's freezing. So just for Thanksgiving, when I had five, six cars, we parked in the driveway and parked on my grass, but, you know, everyone was gone by 10 o'clock. Maybe it happened once a year. I'm thinking of some of those things where sometimes people have temporary things. I know when we moved out, we pulled the truck right up to the door. It was temporary and then moved out, so five hours later. I think you're always gonna have temporary. Now, I have complete faith in the Omaha Police Department that if they got a call like that, and it was a moving truck, then they'd be like, well, I see you're gonna probably move that in a couple of hours. Or if it's Thanksgiving dinner, the Omaha Police are probably gonna give you a warning and say, you know, have a, have a happy Thanksgiving, where I can ticket everyone if everyone's gonna be gone in a few hours. I do find it somewhat strange, though, that if the motor vehicle, right? It, if it's, the, the motor vehicle is not operable or has expired plates, you actually get more time because under the state statute, you get a notice in 10 days. So technically, if I really wanted to park my car, Carmen, um, in, uh, in my grass, you just take, you park it and take the license plate off, then it doesn't fall under this ordinance because the definition of operable is having current plates. So I'm just, I'm just saying that I don't know that this ordinance necessarily solves the problem we're looking to solve. And sometimes just makes a little bit, it, it just may, in my opinion, I think I would suggest that you at least enact the 24-hour if it's there in the grass for more than 24 hours. The same as, you know, parking in the, on the streets where you chalk the tire, chalk the tire if it's still there in 24 hours. That may be the balance, I think, um, that maybe we're looking for. So that if somebody has a temporary thing, it wouldn't affect all of the baseball parents at Lamp Park. Like, we literally would have no parking in Lamp Park at this point. Or if you're, you know, you just have that graduation party or, or Thanksgiving dinner. Or you have Carmen that moves her car every 24 hours. That maybe that would be the way to go. Otherwise, I just think you, you literally could get around the ordinance by removing your license plate. So, and I, that's not what we wanna do with ordinance, is pass them and then somebody tell you how to get around them. So maybe that would be a good balance between this ordinance giving the police a tool and, and doing that 24 hours. and, and doing that twenty-four hours to allow for. So, just some food for thought on the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Bigley?
Thanks, Mr. President. I got a question, Mr. Fanslaw, a couple for you, please.
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Dave, I know you had talked, it was mentioned earlier, about a gravel driveway. So, help me formulate this in my mind. If I have a gravel driveway, or a constituent does, in the city of Omaha, and they park their car on their gravel driveway, if this ordinance is passed, what happens if this is passed to a car that is parked on a gravel driveway that has been there for years and years and years? I know you mentioned nineteen seventy-seven. Can you dive into that a little bit under that chapter fifty-five? Or am I confusing my question as I sometimes do?
No, I don't, I don't think you're confused. So, again, I'm just going to talk about the zoning aspect because that's what my department's in charge of. If somebody's had in Maine, had a gravel driveway or a parking pad and it's properly, since nineteen seventy-seven, and it's properly maintained, that gravel drive or parking pad, there is no zoning violation that could be, that, that could be notified or cited from my department. I, I can't, there's no way I can answer the question under this ordinance, which is a criminal, makes it a criminal offense on how the Omaha Police Department would enforce that or know if the driveway has been gravelled for forty years or if it was just laid down last week.
Okay. I might kick that over to Mr. Kuzi, but one more question for you. Your code inspectors, Dave, if this passes, does this change how you guys operate at all in respect to your code inspectors?
No, it does not.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Question for Mr. Kuzi.
Matt Kuzi, Law Department.
And thanks for clearing up that, the up to five hundred dollar, that was one of the questions I was going to ask. So, that's at the discretion of the judge, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Under some of the highlights of the ordinance, it says, "Motor vehicles and motorcycles must be parked on driveways paved driveway." So, Mr. Fanslaw was talking about the planning side. And maybe this is easy and I'm just not getting it, but help me understand if, if it's a paved driveway, that means concrete or asphalt, correct?
Yes. There's actually a provision in the code where it makes reference to hard surface and it specifically makes mention of, "Maintained with asphalt, concrete, brick, or other permanent hard surfacing materials sufficient to prevent mud, dust, or loose material." So, under your scenario, under this proposed ordinance, it would be a violation to park on a gravel driveway.
Okay.
Because it's not a hard surface driveway or a paved pad.
Okay. And one of the enforcements that the Omaha Police can do in this ordinance is, and clarify this for me, if no one is home or if no one answers the door, the police can issue a citation request. Can you translate what that means?
Sure. One, one of the, one of the issues that the Law Department had to, had to work through with Councilmember Hug on this is there's a difference between parking on a public street and parking on private property. Councilmember Milton's idea about chalking the tires is a good one, but the police could not do that on private property. They can do that in the public streets, that's fine, but they can't do it on private property. That would be close to, if not already, you know, a Fourth Amendment issue with an unlawful search or seizure. So, what police are able to do is they're able to, they encounter a car or multiple cars parked on the grass, go up to the front door of someone's house, knock on the door. If someone answers, they would talk to them, perhaps issue the citation. If no one answers the door because they're not home or they're just not answering, the police will leave and what will, they will do, not just in their circumstance, but in, in other circumstances where it's a misdemeanor offense, a lower level misdemeanor offense, they will enter what's called a citation request. What that means is it's a request to have a citation issued. If a citizen is pulled over for speeding, they'll get their ticket for speeding and while also there, they'll issue the citation to that person for violating the law. The police department and the prosecutor's office came up with that system instead of issuing arrest warrants for people where they would get, you know, booked into the county jail and things like that. So, the prosecutor's office and the police department came up with that citation request system to avoid unnecessarily detaining people for these types of offenses.
Okay. And how long, if I have this citation request, is that a year, two years, five years? What, what's the timeframe on something like that?
The statute of limitations set up by law for any ordinance violation is eighteen months.
Okay. Okay. I think that concludes my questions. And I, the gentleman mentioned soy sitch. I'm thinking of summer sticks right now. A little snack would be good, but I, 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 that answered my questions for now. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Hug?
Am I the last one?
I'm the last.
I almost feel bad about perpetuating this discussion, but I, I'm obligated to. And I'm just going to reiterate a few points. It's up to a five hundred dollar fine. The value of the fine is determined by the judge. Like Mr. Kuzi said, the proposed ordinance basically is an infraction. It's not a, technically, a criminal citation has, in zoning violation, and it's, and, and, and it's not a tow order. It's not a tow order either. If, if it's enforced under the current code enforcement, your car could be towed. You could have to go down the impound lot to pick it up. If you don't remedy that situation, correct me, Mr. Kuzi, if, if I'm not, if I'm wrong, that could ultimately end up in a misdemeanor conviction.
Matt Kuzi, Law Department. Yes, under state law, that could also result in a misdemeanor conviction.
Okay. So, that is a criminal citation.
Yes.
Okay. And, and that, that could include to, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll just, I'll just leave it on.
Leave it on. So, that could include jail time and a fine of how much?
For the state statute violation?
Yes.
That's only up to a hundred dollar fine on, for those types of violations. But I do want to be clear that the way that that statute reads is that it's also an enabling statute that gives the council powers to do what you're doing today because at the very beginning, it says, "A city of the metropolitan class in addition to other remedies." I would say that this is a other remedy.
But misdemeanor ticket, misdemeanor site, misdemeanor conviction stays on people's records. You have to disclose it. Anyway, okay. Sean, would you please come back up here?
Sure.
Sean, you and I met about six months ago when you had a problem with the property down the street from your house.
Yes.
Has that problem been remedied?
So, here's what happens in that situation. I think this is what you're asking me. Ron, we, we had a situation where they were parking roofing trailers on the street and vehicles that were maybe going to be repaired, like I mentioned, like a makeshift body shop on some properties. Ron had those removed and then they'd bring them back from the tow lot and then just stick them in their yard. So, then the police couldn't do anything about it because, from what I understand, it's a zoning issue then. And then there's, it makes it a whole nother problem. It's just a game that, is that what you're asking me? It's like a game that they play.
There was the property down the street that had a large garage?
Yes. I have some pictures of it on my phone if you'd like to see it. I think you've already seen it.
Yeah. I've seen it firsthand. But they had a number of vehicles parked off the driveway around the garage.
Approximately ten of them.
Yeah. Are those still there?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And that's been six months?
Say that again.
And that's been about six months?
Yeah.
And you've seen code inspectors out there?
I don't know if I've seen them. I work all day long, usually.
But police officers.
Yeah, I did see them, actually, even on a Sunday, I believe it was. I've seen them out there and they, they put tow stickers on them and people go out and tear them off, but they must record them because I came home from somewhere.
They keep tracking them.
And they, they did. They were taking them off and that was, that was nice. I mean, it's, it's tough. I mean, when they, when they park in the yard, we're right next door to a school. Imagine how hard it is for a kid. I mean, obviously, they're not going to drive, they're going to look for a car, maybe pull out of a driveway. Are they going to look for somebody to back out of a yard? I mean, we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood. I, I told Ron when I first reported it, one of these days, these kids are going to get hit. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of things that this thing, that I think has, what do you call it, a resolution? I, I think there's a lot of things, a lot of situations like that that will be avoided with this being passed. So, if you have anything else?
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilman Grenat, could I impose upon you to come back up, please?
Gary Grenat, seventeen oh two Ontario, Monrovia, six eight one oh eight.
I want to give you the light, the final word. You've listened to everything everybody's said here today and I want to know if you have anything further you'd like to add?
One thing. I've heard several variables and several what ifs today. But what I haven't heard is, and what I would like the record to reflect, is let's not, let's give our city officials who do the enforcement some credit for being fair and looking and assessing what the problem is and then dealing it with fairly as I possibly can. I haven't heard that all during this whole discussion. I know that I would put my faith and my trust in a zoning inspector, a planning department inspector, our Omaha Police Officers. I realize that the departments are short of personnel, but that doesn't mean you should stop doing your job on the legislative side in providing tools that they could use. But let's give them some credit. Let's give the police some credit. Let's give our planning department inspectors some credit of handling these situations fairly.
Thank you, sir. I really don't see any other solution to a problem that has become so huge in my district. And I see it all over the city. There isn't one city council district here where I can't go out and find somebody who has a car parked in their yard, no car on the driveway, no car parked on the street. Can it be equally enforced? Well, I have faith in the Omaha Police Department. I have faith that I can drive up and down I eighty at seventy-five miles an hour and I may not get a ticket, but a guy on the other side of the street may get a ticket for going seventy-two. You know, that's just the risk you take for, for pushing the envelope. Last but not least, Mr. Fanslaw, we talked about this and Carmen's example, she could come for a zoning board of appeals for an exception.
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. So, yeah, the, just to be clear, the zoning board of appeals is set up through state statute and they're the only body that can waive provisions or sections of the zoning code. So, yes, technically, anything in the zoning code.
This isn't, this ordinance is under, like you referenced before, this is a criminal statute. So, the zoning board of appeals wouldn't have any ability to exempt somebody from this particular ordinance because this is criminal. I just wanted to clarify.
The zoning board of appeals can only waive chapter fifty-five zoning, not any other ordinance, not, not chapter fifty-three, none of the other ordinances or the chapters of, of city code. The only provisions that the zoning board of appeals has the power to waive lie in chapter fifty-five.
But it stands to reason that if an individual could acquire that exception from the zoning board of appeals?
Doesn't apply to this.
Well...
I will.
Hear me out, okay? If they were to receive a citation, have to appear before the judge, they could show the judge that I've made a reasonable account, I've made a reasonable effort to do what I need to do. Well, how, 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 how would you, how would you see this work?
Because the judge doesn't get to determine whether or not the judge likes the ordinance?
Or not? If the person's charged, the judge's obligation, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kuzi, you've got more experience, but the judge has to find whether you're guilty pursuant to the statute or not. It has nothing to do with your intentions. It doesn't have to do with your knowledge. Remember, ignorance is not a defense to the law. So, it doesn't matter if you didn't know it was illegal. It doesn't matter that you didn't intend to do something. In this particular case, if you park your car on the yard and you get issued a ticket, then you're guilty of violating this ordinance. The judge may give you a one dollar fine, but you're still going to have to pay court costs of almost forty bucks.
And you don't think the judge would look at the zoning board of appeal?
No.
You don't think so?
It's not germane to a criminal violation.
Okay.
It's just not germane, I mean, they're different, two different things.
I guess, I have, a difference of opinion.
Okay.
I shouldn't say difference of opinion.
I practice criminal defense and...
I, I apologize. I misspoke. I don't mean different, I have a different opinion.
I, I wouldn't hire you to represent me.
I wouldn't hire me, I wouldn't hire to represent me either. So, we're, we're on the same page. So, I'm going to ask my fellow council members to pass this ordinance. It's a huge problem and we need to do something. And I, I, I'm out of ideas. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't mean to belabor this, but I did have a few questions myself, but I wanted Councilmember Hug to be able to address his ordinance first. Matt, I think I can do this in a speed round with you.
Yeah, Kuzi, Law Department. I'm ready.
That are some loose ends from a couple of questions that were asked earlier and I want to have, make sure I have clear in my mind, too. So, you did just talk about if no one's home, an officer might knock on the door, what they would do is enter a citation request in the system. But that goes into the system, should that person ever be stopped or located on something else, would that person know that they've been, they've received a citation request?
I don't believe so.
I could see that being something to address and then that...
But I will say, we don't do that in, I mean, citation requests are given for, also for simple assaults, damage to property. There's also a thought that it is perhaps a good idea to not let an offender know of particular crimes that the police are looking for them. I'm not just specifically referring to this ordinance, but perhaps we would not want an offender to know that a victim had made a damage to property report against them. So, we don't, usually, the police don't usually like to tip the people off to it.
Right. And so that there was a comment about a notice being bilingual, but there is no notice, right?
Correct. No notices have to be provided for violations of the law. Passing the ordinance is the notice that our constitution requires.
Okay. And there was a comment about the parking pad lease program, which is prevalent in my district, but this does not impact that program and that's still in full effect, right?
This wouldn't have any effect on that, no?
I think we did clarify the gravel driveways. That, that is my understanding. It does apply to a gravel driveway here even though it, it may not be a violation in zoning code, but it is a violation of this ordinance.
That's correct.
And then there was a comment or a question about sidewalks and driveways. That's a common occurrence too, where somebody has parked on a sidewalk or parks blocking a driveway. How's that impacted, if at all, by this?
Both of those offenses are against the law. It's against the law to park over the curb and to block a driveway.
And what's the punishment for that?
It has to be a fine only, I don't have a specific amount, but I don't believe either one of those are arrestable offenses.
Okay, we can look into that, but it's not impacted by this ordinance. I, I appreciate the exchange we just had about the waiver, I was going to dive into that too. I don't think the ZBA waiver covers a hardship or a exception in this instance. Is that also your interpretation?
It does not, under that theory, while the zoning board of appeals, right now, today, April second, twenty twenty-four, you have to park on a hard surface driveway or a paved path. As Director Fansall indicated, that that has been enshrined in the zoning code for a very long time. Now, while the zoning board of appeals could give a person a waiver of that and not subject them to the requirement under the zoning, or under the zoning code, no such exemption exists under this ordinance. So regardless of what the zoning board of appeals says, it wouldn't matter. The zoning board of appeals does not have the ability to, I guess, for lack of a better term, grant immunity to citizens, that they're not subjected to a law. And I guess in case it gets mentioned, I'll just add this as well. Amending the ordinance to say, unless the zoning board of appeals says so, creates its own set of difficulties because there is no way for the police to know who the zoning board of appeals has granted an exception to and who they have not. So thank you for giving me the chance to go pine on that.
Could there be a different exception or hardship identified through the ordinance?
Certainly there can't, there, there can be exceptions, but the exceptions cannot be so specific as to make it difficult for the police to ascertain whether someone has broken the law or not broken the law. So the exceptions have to be so tailored as so that the police are able to, I don't want to say easily identify, but certainly easily discern whether one of those exceptions applies.
Okay. And then lastly for me, there was also a question, is, is this a proactive enforcement mechanism? Or is it purely complaint based or is it a combination of both?
I would say a combination of both. Neighbors could obviously call in to the non-emergency line or nine-one-one if they so wish to make a complaint about it. No different than if someone sees the car parked in the same spot in the street for more than forty-eight hours. Or it could be by observation by the police department as well. So I, I think that'd be both.
All right, thank you. I thought it was important just to make sure I understood some of those details. I understand what Councilmember Hug is trying to accomplish here, I, I see the issue too. And I think it is very prevalent in his district, we've talked about it a lot. I have some in my district I know too. And it is problematic to have cars parking on lawns and in front, front drives where they can't be. That's not what a city aspires to be and what our neighborhood aspires to be. So I, I know you're trying to address a difficult topic. Mr. Hug.
Mr. Cousy, is your speaker on?
Matt Cousy, Law Department.
As Councilmember Melton pointed out, I am not an attorney. I'm going to defer to you. Do you see a way, obviously you see a way that we could write into the ordinance an exception for anybody who received a zoning board of appeal exception?
I do not see that as a feasible alternative. There is, there is no way for the police department to know that, I, I guess put yourself in.
I, I would assume that once the zoning board of appeals would issue a favorable opinion, basically granting that exception, they would receive a letter from the city?
Sure.
Okay, wouldn't that letter from the city serve as proof to the officer?
I think that, I think such an idea puts the police department in an untenable situation. You, you're asking the police department to make such a conclusion. This will come as no surprise to anyone, but people do lie and people do lie to the police. How are the police supposed to know whether the letter from, that's purported to be from the zoning board of appeals is or is not? Chances are it is, but that does put the police in this untenable situation that I don't think that law enforcement should be in where we're asking them to basically decide, well, do they have this waiver and, or do they not? But that's really not something that the police, if they run someone's record, there's not going to be an entry on someone's record that says ZBA appeal granted, that, that simply doesn't exist.
They're going to have to knock on the door.
They do have to knock on the door and attempt to speak to the person.
Presumably somebody's going to answer the door. The officer's going to address the individual. And if the individual says, I have gone through the zoning board of appeals, here's my letter. Now, you know where the individual lives. Chances are, they're not going to lie if they're standing in the house. That, you can substantiate, you probably can substantiate that at that moment. But at a later date, the officer could contact the sergeant and say, I don't know how you guys work, I'm sorry. The officer could contact his superior and say, hey, I was at this address, they said they have an exception. They could look into it, maybe not at that moment, but two days, three days, four days, a week later. So if it does come up again, they could substantiate it.
There is always that level of law enforcement discretion, just like there's prosecutorial discretion. But I'm not the chief of police. But prior to having this job, I spent a very long time as a prosecutor. People have lied about less relevant things than I have an appeal from the ZBA that was granted in order to get themselves out of a jam. I just, again, I'm not the chief of police and, and what you said is possible, but I, I think what legally and what the police would have probably liked to avoid is having to put a person in that situation. So under your scenario, it's possible the person gets a citation and only once they go to court, they have this document from the ZBA. And to Councilmember Melton's position, the prosecutor could be say, that's nice, that's cool that you have that letter, but it doesn't apply in the situation. Or even if they have a trial, the judge could say, this letter from the ZBA, as Director Fansall says, only applies to the zoning code, it doesn't apply to this. My point being, this is put, this puts the police in a bad position where you're trying to get them to discern right then and there, or even at some later date, about something which the, your average police department or police officer, no slight on them, doesn't have a working knowledge of the zoning board of appeals and what their opinions and decisions mean or don't mean.
So if you were to write the exception into the ordinance, that would be doable?
It is the Law Department's job to write, to write what the council is asking for into any ordinance. If that is your request, the Law Department, I will certainly put that into any amendment. But my overall obligation is to the city as a whole. So I do have an obligation to point out issues such as the one that you've been describing when looking at ordinances.
Thank you.
No further lights, next item.
Item eighty-five, a resolution to approve a settlement of claims by Shaquilla Grigsby in the total amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Public hearing and vote on number eighty-five is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move to approve.
There's a motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items eighty-six through one twenty-nine do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Sir, motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion, a second, roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero, meeting is adjourned at five thirty-eight.